The Huntsville City Council meeting is now in session. If you were to have an electronic device that could disrupt this proceeding, please turn it off or put it in a silent mode. As always, thank you so kindly for your help. Also, will you stand if you choose for the invocation led by the Mr. Kelly McCauley and remain standing for the pledge of allegiance led by Councilman Dr. Richard Showers, Sr.? Doctors, yes, sir. Thank you.
Let us pray. Father God, we thank you tonight for this wonderful nation that we live in and for this city. We pray as you instructed, for our leaders and those who are in authority, so that we have peace. And we do it in the context of your 21-second prayer that you gave us. Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come; thy will be done on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread. And forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us. Let us not be led into temptation, but deliver us from evil. For thine is the kingdom, and the power, and the glory forever. Amen.
Amen.
Would you, John, uh, pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all?
And thank you, Dr. Somerville, and thank you, Dr. Showers. We're now at Agenda Item Number Three. Council members, you have an electronic copy of the minutes held for my regular scheduled council meeting, July 28th, 2016. Are there any revisions or corrections? Hearing none, the minutes stand as recorded. We're now at Agenda Item Number Four, Resolutions and Special Recognitions. Mayor Battle, you have the floor, sir.
Mr. President, we have several recognitions tonight and then some presentations on some ongoing projects with the city of Huntsville. So I'd like to start off asking Mr. Kenny Anderson to come up with our CAFI Young Citizen of the Month, and I think we have some young people we want to recognize tonight. And Kenny, I'm gonna turn it over to you.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor. My CAFI team can come on up. We have the opportunity each month to recognize a young person in the community. This is a Madison County initiative, so we cover quite a few schools across the county. This is an opportunity for us to recognize a young person who is doing something meaningful and significant in the community. This month's winner is Alex McQuiston. He's an eighth-grade student at Meridianville Middle School. He's on his way, actually, but his grandfather beat him here, so I'm gonna ask him to come over and accept on his behalf, and hopefully Alex will come in as we're doing this presentation. But just to tell you something real quickly about why Alex is being recognized, from time to time, we have the opportunity of... There he is! Give Alex a big hand! Come on over here, Alex, and stand with your granddad and me. Alex has been recognized tonight because he is going above and beyond the call of duty to his first responsibility, which is to his home. His mother was injured in a very serious accident, and I'm just gonna read a short portion of this that says, "This 12-year-old child has taken on responsibilities of an adult without complaining just because he wanted to help his mom. He has been through so much and is still one of the strongest, bravest, and loving kids I have met. I am very proud to say this child is our future." He's also a National Junior Honor Society member. He won first place in the science fair. He is interested in becoming a young Marine because he wants to surf his country, and I agree with the nominator that Alex McQuiston, the winner of the Rocket City Broadcasting CAFI Young Citizen of the Month for August, is definitely our future. Alex, we're proud of you, and there's some people that are joining me tonight who wanna just say hello to you and congratulations as well. Let's start with Dr. Hobbs.
Alex, we're very just excited about what you do and many other young folks do, and we just appreciate you wanting to take care of your family and to do other great things in the community as well. So on behalf of Huntsville Utilities, our CEO, Mr. Jay Stow, and the rest of our senior staff, we have a bag o' stuff for you, something to help you at home, help you at school, and something just for you as well. Just don't spend it all in one place, okay? Thank you. Yes, sir, Mr. Alfred.
Alex, I represent an organization whose sole mission is the improvement of young people in our community, and you are well on your way to being what we perceive as an optimist. So on behalf of the Optimists Club of Huntsville, I'd like to give you this token of our appreciation and our esteem. And also, at our youth banquet in the spring, you have an invitation to be a part of that as well.
Okay, Alex, I have the job of presenting you your certificate for the Youth of the Month, and on behalf of the Human Relations Commission for the city of Huntsville and all the other sponsors, I present you your certificate. Congratulations, sweetheart.
Thank you so much.
Alex, I'm Captain Rice with the Huntsville Police Department, and we'd like to give you this certificate in recognition of exemplary service to our community, and I encourage you to continue on the journey that you're on. And on behalf of our chief, Chief Mark McMurray, and all the 400 some odd police officers in Huntsville, we congratulate you for your accomplishment. Keep up the good work, son.
Thank you.
As Alex came up tonight, I said, "Somebody's gotta take care of this traffic out here so you can get here on time, don't they?" And who would that be? All these guys behind you here. Alex, I wanna say congratulations. Thank you for being such a great citizen. We have a coin from the city of Huntsville, and I wanna present that to you and say thank you for being a great citizen for the city of Huntsville and Madison County and our whole area. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, if I could ask James Gossip from our Parks and Recreation to come forward. We've got some recognitions here for some young people who have done some outstanding things in state athletics, and we'd like to recognize them at this time. And Mr. Steve Ivey, the Director of Parks and Recreation. Steve, if you'd come up and help us with these presentations.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to invite up now-retired coach Mike Goode. I guess once you're a coach, you're always a coach. He had the pleasure of doing something most coaches don't get to do, and that's going out, winning his last game. So I'm gonna let him recognize the baseball team and some of his student athletes that are here. Coach, appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Gossip. Appreciate it. Mayor Battle, City Council, appreciate you having us here tonight. We did have a good run. Makes it three years in a row for us and four state championships in the last seven years. So we've actually had some very good athletes to work with. And with me tonight is James Nix. James, raise your hands so everybody knows who you are, okay? Justin MacArthur, Cade Morrison, Dylan Murphy, and Reed Holman. Dylan Murphy was the MVP of the State Championship Series. He threw Game Three for us and was very productive offensively. So these young men are to be congratulated, so a round of applause for them. And Mayor, I just wanna thank you for the time that you and I have known each other. When you see me at the Space and Missile Defense Conference, you know I'm there full-time now, okay? And not out on a baseball field. But it's been good getting to know you and really appreciate the recognition, and Madison Academy is very thankful for the time that you spend. Thank you.
Coach and guys, congratulations. Great job, Coach. Doesn't matter if you're at Space and Missile Defense Conference all the time, you're still a coach.
And since I'm going out, since this is my farewell song, just wanted to introduce David Presley, who's picking up the reins for me. He'll be the head coach at Madison Academy. So hopefully next year, he'll be up on the podium.
And choose to feel...
Yeah, exactly.
Along those same lines, we also wanna recognize the Madison Academy track team. Some of them had some excellent results at the state track meet. So I'll call your name, Will Oglesby. Will here? Come on up, Will. We're gonna give you, present you with a certificate. Will was the 3200-meter 3A champion. We have a four-by-800 relay team of Juliana Hill, Elizabeth Nix, Sarah Ekins, and Madison Thome. You all come up. We'll have you all stand up here. And then we have a four-by-100 relay team also. Angelina Williams, Sarah Elkins, Elizabeth Nix, and Lila Nelson. Congratulations.
And congratulations to the whole Madison Academy family for all that you've done. I know that there's some parents out there who have driven lots of times early in the morning, late at night to school to drop off kids and come back and supported all that they've done. It wouldn't happen without you. So to all the family, we say congratulations. And if I could ask Chief Mark McMurray to come forward?
Please, sir.
Chief McMurray has been our police chief for... Has it been a year yet? A whole year? We're just right on one year, and he's had a very interesting year and had a great time. But when we chose him, we wanted somebody who had been in the department, who had grown up through the department, who knew the people and knew what we needed to do. We are right at his 30th anniversary of his 30th anniversary of working here. Can you imagine? Working at one place for 30 years. Chief has been a great asset for the city of Huntsville, for the Huntsville Police Department, has come up through the ranks and has been in all capacities of the ranks. And he is one of the guys that we have sat through some very interesting meetings lately, and he's one of almost a battle buddy, so I'd like to have him in my foxhole any time. But I wanna present to you our 30-year pin and say thank you for 30 great years for the city of Huntsville, and we're looking forward to probably another 20.
Appreciate it.
Congratulations. And now, Mr. President, we have a couple of presentations that we wanted to get done because we're right at the time now. Mr. Hamilton's gonna do a Big Spring Park update. We gave you one a couple weeks ago. There've been some changes in the plan. We've taken some neighborhood feedback, some citizen feedback, some council feedback, and there's been a couple little changes in there. We wanna update you there. Shane Davis is gonna come forward with our city center update, 'cause I think you've seen a lot of bulldozers, tractors, and everything else over there starting to get busy on that site. Mr. Hamilton's also gonna go through an auditorium update, because we are now starting to dig pools, and we're gonna... Hopefully, we'll be ready in January of next year. And we have a new website that is gonna be launched on August 25th, and we wanna give you a preview of that website tonight. And so Kelly Scrippsure, Ms. Scrippsure's gonna come up and give us a preview of that. A lot of this is just to let y'all know before things happen so that you... Nobody is surprised, and also so that we can make sure that we get the proper feedback from citizens and from the community. Thank you so much.
Good evening, members of council. So this presentation is to give you an update and details on the renovation plans for Big Spring Park West. There is an item on the agenda tonight. It's the first of what I believe will be two contracts that will come before you for work to be done in the park. The one tonight is at 15S on the agenda, and obviously you'll address that when you get to that point in the agenda, but wanna go ahead and give you an update on the nature of that contract and the work that'll be done. And so we'll go into details on that contract as we go through this. So first, as we said before, in accordance with the capital plan that you passed last year, it's been our intent to provide renovations to the park. The engineering staff and several departments have been working together on updating the work and do the engineering design for those repairs throughout this year, and it's now time for you to consider the actual construction contract. The issues that need to be addressed are collapsing seawall, some broken uneven sidewalks, erosion, insufficient electrical infrastructure, poor water flow within the ponds, and then just general pedestrian safety, primarily the places where pedestrians cross into the park across a couple major downtown streets. These are the same pictures that you saw last time. This just gives you examples in three places where the seawall is collapsing. There's other places all around the seawall, particularly in the portion of the pond to the west of the Red Bridge, but also some on the eastern side as well. But those are just some examples of some of the issues with the seawall, which is the primary problem in the park. There's other places, examples where sidewalks just do age, as they oftentimes do with settling and things have cracked up, and so in many cases, they actually create tripping hazards and things that we need to get repaired. You can see here on this particular part of the pond, all of those places where you see clay are examples where erosion and water infiltration behind the walls actually creating hazards. It's really, you know, not real safe as it is to go up to the edge of the water thing. So this repair will fix those types of things. And you see examples here where water's actually draining across the sidewalk and creating erosion issues going as it goes down to the pond. So this is the engineering design. What you'll notice is it's not really a change in the design of the park. What it does is primarily, as we said, replaces the seawall. Because of the nature of the way the ponds are constructed, what we'll actually do is build a new wall in front of the existing wall and then backfill over it and then be able to come in and replace the sidewalks. It also fixes, as we mentioned, the pedestrian crossings into the park here, so it'll provide better signalization, better markings, and more obvious ways for pedestrians to cross in a safe manner into and through the park. And as the mayor mentioned, after this presentation, Mr. Davis will be doing an update on city center. Of note, we have worked with the design team and the developers on city center to make sure this pedestrian crossing lines up directly with what will be primarily a pedestrian alleyway that goes through the middle of development. When he shows you those site plans in his presentation, it'll become obvious to you what that does. It really creates a very comfortable connection between that development and the park and the nature of that development is such that we believe there will be a lot of pedestrian traffic looking to cross Williams into that development and back into the park. So we've worked together with our design team to make sure that what we do and what they do fits together. At the last time we did this presentation, there was some discussion and still some ongoing looks at how to deal with the area right behind the museum of art. And as I mentioned then, there was one concept that actually put in a hardscape plaza, and as the mayor mentioned, there was one primary change, is that is to remove that plaza from the plan. If you go over there right now, you'll see that there's already kind of a moon-shaped piece of sidewalk there that's behind the museum. So this reflects retaining that same design there behind the museum, but this part in the middle remains grass. So everything where you see white is obviously grass. So it does not... That plaza plan was removed from this design. So the cost of the contract that you have on the agenda tonight is $1.16 million. That is the two components of that. The biggest part is the base bid that does the actual seawall and also does all of the about 7,000 square yards of sidewalk. There is one option that's included in that, those components that we had bid separately in case we decided not to pursue them or do them at a later date. There's one option that was in the bid that is included tonight because we have decided to move forward with some repairs around the eternal flame, so I'll go back to that. Many of you are familiar with the eternal flame here. It's actually not real visible right now because a lot of the vegetation and the trees and things have grown up around it. We'll clean that up so it's more visible. And there's some places where concrete was replaced with asphalt. It's just become unsightly, and so we had to design to go ahead and make those repairs immediately around the eternal flame, and so that is included in the contract that's before you tonight. The other piece is an extension of the culvert at Church Street, and this is part of dealing with the water quality issue that we've discussed. So right now, right at the edge of the bridge, right at the edge of Church Street, essentially where that culvert ends, we... Part of this to create the safe landing area for pedestrians to come across, but also to help redirect the water. The culvert will be extended and redirected so that water actually flows through this area and helps clean the sediment and things that settle over time. The ponds will actually do a good job of cleaning themselves as long as we make sure that the water is directed the appropriate way. So some of the initial work that you'll see is actually extending that culvert and getting the water directed the way it needs to go. So we're already beyond some of the dates in the timeline. So we've had bid opening, and tonight is... We're presenting the contract to you. So pending your approval, we'll have a pre-construction meeting on August 23rd, and then a notice proceeding on August 29th, and they will start immediately with anticipated completion date of April 1st. Now, that is a very aggressive timeline. There are several departments that'll be doing work there alongside the contractor. Basically, what we've done here in order to ensure that we do this as cost-efficiently as we can is anything that Public Works or General Services or another department is capable of doing internally, they are doing. So, you know, there at the end of August, when you see the contractor out there, you'll see Public Works working right alongside them, doing all those tasks that we've set aside for Public Works to do in order to save costs in the contract. There are a number of events that we wanna make sure that we plan around. That's partly why we've given the contractor a very aggressive timeline. One is we wanted to allow the concerts in the park to complete this summer, which they have just completed. That's really what drove not starting until August. We would love to have been able to start earlier, but we wanted to allow the concerts to complete. There are portions of the park that will reopen in order to accommodate the ice skating behind the museum of art, as well as a little bit of tinsel trail there on the west side that we expect. Probably by the November timeframe, portions of the park right along Church Street and behind the museum will be able to reopen to accommodate those events, and then ultimately be done by the beginning of April to accommodate Panoply. And so we have met with the groups that host those events. They understand where we are. We'll continue to dialogue with them. If we encounter problems in the field, then we have some plans and ways we can mitigate the impacts of their events. We fully expect all those events would still occur. We just may have to shift them if we run into problems. But right now, the contractor and the departments doing this work are comfortable that they'll be able to accomplish this, but they do acknowledge it's a very aggressive timeline, and you could encounter things in the field that might impact it. So I'm open to any questions you might have. Yes, sir?
Dr. Robinson? John, I guess one of the questions that I'm sure we'll probably hear from folks, what's gonna happen to the ducks? Are they gonna be relocated?
So, you know, the water stays in the pond through this whole time. We're not draining the ponds, and so the fish and the ducks will still have access to that. We are a little bit concerned about the safety to the ducks during the time, and so we are looking at potentially being able to relocate them. We have places like Goldsmith Shiftman or Haynes Nature Preserve, you know, there's places where they could be relocated to.
Okay, I just know we'll probably get questions about that. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, sir. Dr. Robinson.
I think I recall from the original presentation that the reason we were doing that hardscape plaza behind the museum was to support the ice rink. But now you're saying it's been removed, so how are we dealing with the issue of the ice rink tearing up the grass?
So what we've done in that design, that moon-shaped sidewalk is relocated a little bit from the one. I said you could go there right now, and you can see there's a moon-shaped sidewalk. What we've done there is we've extended it out just a little bit so that the rink will actually fit on the grass that's inside of that half-moon shape on the map. So it does require some resawding each year, but the issues right now with it is the way it's opened. When we come in and resaw it, you end up with a lot of uneven ground. I mean, there's only so much you can do when you do a resaw of a patch in the middle of a field. By isolating that one pad of grass, we can resaw that entire thing and level it to the sidewalks that surround it. It'll be a good border, and so we think that's an appropriate fix for right now. We do think, I mean, I fully expect within the next couple of years, we will have some continued dialogue. I think we will probably have people approach us and want to consider doing that hardscape, and that's something that we will bring to you, and we could consider that if we have folks that have asked for it. We did have, after last presentation, we had a couple of citizens engage with us and express some concerns about it. I had a couple members of council talk to me a little about it, and we feel like this is an appropriate compromise for now, but nothing in that plan prevents us from coming back at a later date if the community believes that the hardscape is appropriate and put it in. Essentially, that sidewalk that we're gonna put in in this plan would serve as the border around that area. But in terms of dealing with the grass, by isolating that particular area, it becomes much easier to come back with a suitable resaw, and it doesn't impact the aesthetics of the park.
Any further questions, council members? Thank you, Mr. Hamilton. And I believe Mr. Davis?
If you've been downtown most recently around the Embassy Suites, you've noticed that city center is now in full swing and construction, and we've had several citizens call to, you know, just inquire on what the final layout and the construction will be, and a couple council members as well, so we thought we'd give you a quick update of some timelines and some final programming for the site. So just to give you a real quick background of the development agreement that was passed by city council. Phase one will include 240 multifamily units with onsite management. One urban-style hotel that's now has been announced is the AC Marriott with 150 rooms and 38,000 square feet of retail. And then phase two will consist of another 100-room hotel that appears to be a residence inn by Marriott, so you'll have two Marriott flags on the campus of city center, and then additional mixed-use components to be determined by market. It's a very small space up near the Roundabout that may be additional retail or office or some other use. So this is the final layout of city center, and I'll kinda go counterclockwise... Or clockwise, I should say. This is the area that is currently having the utilities and storm drainage and site pads put in. There's quite a bit of fill that has been placed to get the site pad ready. The site work is scheduled to be complete by the end of the month, the first week of September, and then the AC Marriott in this first retail A section will start having foundations put in place and still being hung for that component. And then in early October, as the site... First of all, let me explain, the site is very, very small. The soil has come up and the site pad has gotten ground level, so you can better see it from the road. You can just see how small and compact the site really, really is. So they'll start this building first that will consist of some retail and the 150-room AC Marriott, and then sometime in October, as that still starts to get hung, they'll start coming in with a structured parking deck number one and a brand-new concept that will be the first of the state of Alabama. It's a very new concept that is kinda taking over in very progressive cities like Austin and Dallas and Nashville and Atlanta. It's a food hall, and I'll show you more about that momentarily. So this will be the focus area of the remaining portion of 2016, and then early 2017, they'll start utilizing construction in this area. They will use this portion the rest of this year as a lay-down area for construction materials to start bringing this up out of the ground, and this would be Phase 1A or 1B, and then the residence inn would come as this. So as you see, construction, as you're in the downtown area, you'll see construction kinda move from this location into this location and then back out. So as I just mentioned, this is the primary focus of construction that you'll see starting in October and November, and these are engineering drawings, so this is the layout of the AC Marriott. This is a standalone restaurant. The AC Marriott will have its own restaurant and full bar in 150 rooms. It will have a rooftop top deck for both the public and patrons staying in the hotel. This is the structured parking deck that will support both the hotel, the retail, and the second hotel, and then this is the food hall concept. So this is a rendering provided by AC Marriott. As I've mentioned to this council before, AC Marriott, this would be the 10th AC Marriott in the world, and they're all custom-designed for their specific location. Not any one AC Marriott looks alike. This is the proposed AC Marriott, six-story tall for Huntsville. This is the bar/restaurant area, and then the main entrance, this would be looking from Thrasher Fountain Embassy Suites looking back towards the site, this being Monroe, and this being Williams. This is the retail that wraps along Williams. There would be a standalone restaurant, and then the plaza that Mr. Hamilton spoke about that connects to Big Spring Park will come through here. This is the food hall concept. The current design is... The current design is more kind of what Huntsville's known about in downtown. The warehouse, mill, village-type feel, very open and airy food hall. This is another rendering of the food hall. And then, this is the layout of the food hall. So, right now, it's proposed to have 14 food concepts within the food hall. The best depiction that I can give the public and the council tonight of a food hall concept, market-style food hall, is think of sit-down dining-type food in almost a food court format. So, you can see there's a seafood concept, there's a raw bar, there's a bread kind of food, artisan food stand, a burger kind of fast casual burger stand, taco, pizza, ice cream, olive, coffee, kind of a Mexican street food. So, very, very large array of food in one location. So, you kind of think about some of the options on University Drive or Jones Valley area. Think of all those restaurants under one roof in a very fast casual format. Some photos of what the interior of a food hall may look like is it's an open chef concept to where you can see your food being cooked and prepared. And then, where you would sit to dine is a very open format, kind of like a food court in a mall would be, is you would just find an open table. So, you would go counter-serve to these 14 different concepts, order your food, get your food, and then just casually find somewhere in an open format area to dine. This is another concept. These are actually renderings of the design guidelines that UDA put together for City Center developers. So, these are some of the finishes that are being required inside the food hall. So, these are not just a concept of somewhere else in the world. These are actually kind of raw finishes that will be in our food court here in Huntsville, Alabama, or food hall. Again, as I said, first quarter 2017, start retail B-area. And then, the multifamily and a second parking deck to support this portion of the City Center project. This is the street plaza that Mr. Hamilton spoke of that will connect Big Spring Park. This is looking Williams or Big Spring Park, looking south into the City Center development. So, or, excuse me, north, looking from the City Center development. So, on the left, you see the food hall. This is the apartment. This is actually a one-way street that will come off Williams. But, at night or during festival or special events, it will be bollered off and become nothing but pedestrian access only. Again, from Big Spring Park, looking back south now. This is the Big Spring Park improvements concept that Mr. Hamilton explained that is on the agenda tonight. It's part of the seawall and the improvements of Big Spring Park. And then, a raised tabletop that's cobblestone to slow traffic down along Williams for high pedestrian activity. And then, you come into this plaza area. This being the AC Marriott standalone hotel. The food court, you can just see it around the corner. And then, this is the 240 multifamily units. Third quarter of 2017, about this time next year, most of this will be finished. This is currently scheduled to be about 70% complete. So, it will allow for the developer to start on the second hotel. And that should finish up about the summer of '18. As I said, for a total of 250 additional hotel rooms. And this is the early concept of the second hotel of the residence inn, a very urban-style. Kind of fits the architecture of our current downtown, a lot of old-world-type brick and glass. And also fits very well with the food hall concept that's kind of in this plaza in the background. And then, towards the end of 2017 is this last piece that could be multi-story office, supported by a surface lot in this location, or, you know, additional retail or restaurants according to the market demand. So, the City of Huntsville construction. We're currently completing Dr. Lowery Boulevard from the Fagan Creek to Williams. And the next slide will go into a little more detail there. Construction is underway of extending the culvert up to behind the Publix Shopping Center and adding the Downtown Greenway connectivity from the walkway in the park in between the VBC and the Embassy Suites. And that connectivity will take you into Twickenham Square. And then, the streetscape improvements, as I mentioned, to connect to Mr. Hamilton's presentation of Big Spring Park and that connectivity along Williams. So, Dr. Lowery Boulevard, this portion is 100% complete and open to the public. This is the Twickenham Square area. Bryant Bank is currently under construction on this final parcel for Twickenham Square. And the Publix would be in this general location here. I'm sorry, here. This would be the apartments. So, this portion is complete. This original design had a bridge. We have, we did a deductive change where we brought the council to you, I think about a month ago. That was almost a million dollars, where we changed that to a box culvert. We took those savings and converted that million-dollar savings for the bridge to build the greenway that is under construction. And the reason that there's a delay on this was the redesign in this location. But, also, the original design had parallel parking in this general location. We have changed that to add about 70 angled parking spaces there. We think due to this development and the greenway and just all the connectivity that's starting to occur between Twickenham Square, this development, and the park, and the VBC, the demand for parking is going to be very great in this area. So, we wanted to redesign to triple the number of spaces that would be open to the public in this general area. Those plans are complete. We have given those to the contractor, and they are back, started working. The entire roadway is scheduled to be complete by the end of the year. So, they're now moving very, very quickly. But, you know, we knew that this was one time to design and get it right. So, we took a pause from this location back to the park on Williams. And I'm very proud of our team who sat down and worked with the developer. And we got something that we think is much more functional, both for the pedestrian, the bicyclists, and the motorists. So, there's been many questions during council on return on investment for this project. The private investment by the developers currently slated at an estimated $60 million, based on what they are currently having under design and proposed plans. The revenue lease, I did a 20-year term of investment. That's the first term of the lease. There are three additional renewals should the council, at the end of that 20-year period, to continue the project. So, on a 20-year lease for the property is $3.6 million. The portion for the second hotel was a sale that the council approved is $1 million. They have exercised that option and should take that down early next year. Property tax on the investment over the 20-year period would be $13.9 million. And sales tax on the retail portion is currently at $10.2 million conservatively. So, a total 20-year return on investment for this piece of property of the City of Huntsville that we want to remind the public we would still have ownership over. We're leasing the property will be $28.7 million. So, you know, if we, naturally, there'd be some depreciation out of that second lease on the property tax. But, over the life of the lease, we extend all options that are available if we like how the project is going. After 20 years, the return on investment to the taxpayer of Huntsville is over $100 million to the piece of property and still retaining ownership. I ask for any questions the council may have.
Any questions, Dr. Robinson?
So, the count on the hotel rooms there is 250 total between the two hotels?
Yes, ma'am, Dr. Robinson. The AC Marriott will be 150, and then, the residence inn would be 100 rooms.
And the Embassy across the street has 350?
Yes.
So, we're still short about 400 hotel rooms to get to the 1,000, which is the goal for downtown?
Yes, that's where we're at. We've got some projects in play in other parts of the city that may help kind of start some of that attrition down and getting a lot closer to that 1,000 rooms to really take us to the next level of hosting some major conferences.
And you have to count the Spring Hill Suites, too, which is, what, 125 units in there?
Yeah.
And then, you've got the, so, Spring Hill Streets, Suites counts, and does Twickenham Square also count?
We need about 300 more rooms to really kind of...
So, 300 is really the target, what we want to bring downtown?
Yeah, we need about three more hotels, and then, we can really start being more aggressive on some conferences that some of our peer cities are currently being awarded.
Have we identified sites for the additional rooms that we're going to have?
We have, you know, through the big-picture process. You know, we've looked at land utilization in the downtown core. As we start next year, the next, some of the processes of the big-picture process, we'll be doing some area plans, as we've spoken about, for North Huntsville and South Huntsville and others. Well, the downtown area is also one of those area master plans of where we'll kind of drill down site-specific. But, we've identified some sites. Naturally, you know, it's up to the private property owner to do that. But, we think we'll be successful around the VBC area to get that in the next 24 months or so.
Thank you. Any further questions, Mr. Kling?
What process did the city and the developer go through as far as landscaping? I'm hearing from folks about landscaping these days.
Well, it's a good question, Councilman Kling. So, Urban Design and Associates was the master planner for the City Center project. And they did it without, you know, the city having to really press very hard. It was one of the reasons we chose this developer in the RFP process. UDA and Associates is world-renowned. They've been responsible for most of the resurgence of the City of Pittsburgh and a lot of the accolades they've got from landscaping. So, as I mentioned, like the food hall, they've put a design guideline book out for both the landscaping, the exterior finishes for all buildings, and the interior finishes. And the developer has committed to do that. So, it would be very heavily landscaped, a lot of open, public plazas just for recreation and meeting spaces. As I said, this pedestrian alley will have expansive courtyards and just green spaces just to relax, you know. It will be in the entertainment district. So, you know, to be able to come in the food hall and maybe get a beverage or a quick bite and come outside and just casually just sit around with some friends or colleagues or family members. It will be extensively landscaped.
Okay. Well, with, I know we've got other inner-city areas that we're looking at for projects, and I guess...
Absolutely.
Landscaping is certainly a good thing, quality of life, the fact that we're a big city, but we still got time to, you know, figuratively smell the roses and enjoy.
Absolutely. And as we continue in the big-picture process, you know, the planning staff and administration and myself are looking, updating some zoning ordinances. And we've still got some ways to go in the big-picture process before we get to that stage. But, we're starting to take some looks at some peer cities and how ours is compared. And maybe some outdated sections of it. We'll, of course, bring that before the planning commission, be extensively reviewed publicly, and then ultimately to the City Council. But, we're probably, you know, a year out from that process. So, we're trying to push as much as we can with the ordinances we have. But, this will be very well done.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Kling. Any further questions?
I have a couple of questions. One is really not that relevant. I'm still not so sure if I understand the difference between a food hall and a food court. But, we don't have to go back to that, Mr. Davis. More importantly, I noticed that there are some simultaneous overlapping construction with this project and the project at Mid-City, which they are the same builders. And these are both kind of major projects. And I know that the company that has these two projects is a very reputable company.
Yes, sir.
But, my concerns are, are we going to encounter any trouble at the river with running these construction projects almost simultaneously to some degree, like in 2017 and '18, that kind of thing?
No, I think we're well-poised by our commitment of what we're going to do with those projects and other projects with the city. And, you know, from a constructability standpoint, we've been very blessed with a lot of jobs that has been created, which creates a lot of construction. We've seen an uptick in new construction companies come into our city and set up shop, which is what we need. It keeps prices competitive. It keeps our small business to large businesses that may do an expansion, keeps their budget in line. So, I think we're going to be very well-served in all those fronts that you kind of talked about, the concern. Something I will point out about Mid-City since you brought it up. City Center and Mid-City has a lot of similarities. And as we get into that project, as I told you when we passed that development agreement, we will make, you know, a substantial public investment on 100 acres. We have no choice if we're going to maintain that corridor. So, the reason I bring that up is this very small site that's about eight acres. So, it's about one-tenth of Mid-City. The 20-year return on investment is almost $30 million. So, our small investment in Mid-City, as we get started on that project, the return on investment will be significant. So, we remain focused. We've got a long way to go on that project, and we'll be diligent on it. I think the developer is diligent and very committed. We have received, give the council members a quick update. We have received design guidelines per the development agreement. They were 120 pages. They're very, very impressive. Our planning staff, our engineering staff, and myself are reviewing those. And we'll have some minor comments to send back to Urban Design and Associates. But, once we get those corrected, I'll be giving a presentation, and you will amend the development agreement to add these as a requirement by the developer. And I think you'll like, extremely like what you will see. They're very impressive.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. And I hope my question didn't sound selfish, because I do approve both projects. However, I am very beholden to Mid-City. I am the council member in District Five, contrary to what some people may say or think. So, make sure there's no ambiguity about that. Thank you, Mr. Davis. Any further questions, council members?
Thank you, sir. Now, at agenda item, I'm sorry. Yes, go ahead, Mr. Hamilton. I didn't know you were coming back, sir.
This and one more presentation. So, just wanted to give you a quick update on the construction project at the Aquatics Center. Many of you know the areas, the naditorium. It's the most significant construction project the city's undertaken in a number of years. It is progressing extremely well. And we thought it appropriate to give you an update at this point, the construction. And we'll do it again here in a few months as we continue to move forward. So, you saw this before when you approved the contract. This is the site plan. This portion, this pool, is the existing naditorium. And the major construction adds a competition pool with a good bit of spectator seating, as well as a therapy pool that is specifically focused on the needs of our elderly citizens and those that may have mobility challenges and handicaps and things, to be able to support the aquatics programs that our city really has grown into and demanded. In a minute, I'm going to show some pictures that are taken just within the last couple of days of the status of the construction. The first one I'll show you is actually of the therapy pool from the outside. So, the perspective will be standing approximately here when we flip the slide here. So, this is the outside of the therapy pool. As I said, you'd be standing, you know, in that parking lot that I indicated. And this is inside. So, one of the things that's interesting about the way you build an indoor pool is you first build the building. You leave a big enough hole in the wall so you can take the equipment in and dig the hole. So, what you're looking at on the inside here is all the walls are up. Much of the other infrastructure and things are in there. The roof is already on the building. And then, they entered through basically a garage door where this picture is taken from to start digging the pool. And so, that is a therapy pool that you see there. They're now forming up the walls and the floor of the pool and getting it prepared to get open by end of December, beginning of January is the timeframe. And that's on schedule with the builder. And this is the competition pool. This is looking from the east side of the lake that's here in Bronze Springs. It's a good perspective, so you can see how it sits within that park area. And there'll be a lot of work done to the exterior and around that park to better integrate that area into the real feel of Bronze Springs Park. And that is scheduled to be complete on schedule by June of '17. So, of note, the project is on schedule and on budget, and the builder's doing very well. What I'm going to close with, before taking any questions you might have, is a 3D model of rendering that the architect did, if I can get the mouse to appear, and an actual fly-through, so you will see what the pool will look like when it is completed. So, you see, it's first will fly around the outside. This white portion is the existing naditorium. So, the construction does those two new buildings with the pools and an interconnecting lobby so that it functions as one large building. About 68,000 square feet being added to the complex. This brings you into the lobby and to the desk for checking in and paying for those that need to pay for use. And we'll first go over and look at the therapy pool. So, this pool is 25 yards long. So, it will serve well in training kids to learn how to swim. But, its primary purpose is really for the aerobics classes and other therapeutic, you know, aquatics programs. You see the large ramp that came down there that accommodates wheelchairs. So, we do have citizens that will use a wheelchair to get down into the pool. And it's shallow enough on one end to acco... pool, and it's shallow enough on one end to accommodate their needs and deep enough on the other end to accommodate those that need a deeper section. You have concessions for when there's events. And this will take you over into the competition pool area. So, this is a 50-meter pool, so if you've been watching Olympics the last few days, it's the same size as an Olympic pool. In the configuration shown in this, and you'll see that there is a bulkhead that goes across the middle of the pool, this allows you to transition it from the long course using the full 50-meter length to a short course pool, so you can have two 25-yard pools, which is the more common. The high schools use short course, and most of, and the colleges and things use short course, but Olympics use the long course, so it allows you to see. So, seating for about 1,450 folks that were up in the seating that you saw there, which is, I think, will be the most, the largest amount of spectator capacity of any one of these kind of complexes in the state of Alabama and potentially throughout the southeast. So, this complex, once complete, will allow us to compete for and host some of the largest regional and national meets that, right now, many of our teams have to go somewhere else to compete in, will allow us, in addition to meeting the demands of our community, which is really the primary purpose, but secondarily we'll be able to host some pretty significant events and competitions in that facility. So, pending your questions.
Any questions, council members? Dr. Robinson?
I know there's been some concern expressed about losing the pool at the Scruggs, the therapy pool at the Scruggs Center. How is this pool compared to that pool in terms of size and condition and amenities?
So, this facility will be, the pool itself will be approximately the same size. That one was not originally built to be a therapy pool, and so it's got an odd shape. It's wider on one end and on the other, so it's not a true rectangle, but the length is the same. It's a 25-yard pool, and many of folks in the community remember hosting the city meet there, and so it required a 25-yard pool. So, in terms of length, it's identical. It has to be to be certified as a competition pool, but the width is a little bit different because this will be a true rectangle. So, this is probably a little bit wider, but I honestly have not compared the absolute, you know, surface area of the water, but it's approximately the same. The difference is, that pool was never designed to be a therapy pool. And so, as the use of that pool transitioned away from competition and typical recreation swimming to a therapy pool, there were components added to it to try and make it good enough. But the reality is, it's not really good enough. It does not appropriately accommodate wheelchair access, for example. And so, while there is a ramp there and people do use it with wheelchairs, it's very, very challenging, and we oftentimes have to have multiple staff members come and assist somebody to use the ramp appropriately and things and use it safely. So, it becomes resource-intensive to use it the right way. The depths will be basically the same, though this one will actually accommodate, has a deeper end to it, and that's very important. We, unfortunately, the gentleman who I'm about to refer to is actually just recently passed away in the last couple of weeks, but a gentleman who was quadriplegic came to the pool three times a week to get his therapy. And speaking with his wife and his therapist, the medical community would really argue that access to a pool and the kind of therapy he was able to get there really extended his life. But he was very tall, gentleman, about six foot four, and so that pool was not deep enough for him to ever get fully vertical because his feet would be on the floor of the pool. We used him as our example. I mean, in terms of, in terms of his handicap, that was basically as severe as you get. He had absolutely no feeling or movement below his neck. And so, we took, used him and worked with him and his wife to understand his needs and design this pool to ensure that that most extreme example was accommodated. And we very much appreciate their engagement and their willingness to talk through his situation and make sure that the architects understood how to design a pool around his needs. So, this pool has at one end, it's a little bit over seven feet deep, so that someone who's very tall like him could get completely vertical in the water, be completely weightless, and allow the therapy to work appropriately. And so, it will accommodate those kind of needs where the Williams Aquatic Center does not.
Any additional questions, council members?
Mr. Hamilton, this weekend, the William Hooper Council Alumni Association is hosting their 50th year anniversary out at the Marriott. With this project that you just displayed to us, what would be the relationship between doing it now and doing what we have proposed to do at council?
So, what I believe you're referring to is how the property where Williams and Scruggs is currently located, how that relates. I think certainly council will recall, but members of the public may not be fully aware that, you know, in the city center update that Mr. Davis just presented, that Phase II property is the property where Williams and Scruggs are currently located. The developers do have the option to purchase that property and at a price that council has agreed to and approved, but also part of that commitment is the proceeds from that sale will be committed to go towards the redevelopment of the Council High School property. It's obviously not enough. There is a need for some private fundraising. We've asked the community to engage in some private fundraising to complete that, and I also believe that we'll need to continue here in the next couple of years to continue to work on the city and maybe other public entities continue to contribute into that. But in terms of the sales proceeds from that Phase II property, it is committed to go directly towards the account associated with the redevelopment of the Council High School.
Yep. I'm asked this weekend to give a tentative date that we're going to start on that project. What would that be?
So, we have committed to the community that we will not close the Williams Aquatic Center until this new pool is opened. And so, this construction contract was purposely set up to have an earlier completion date from the therapy pool versus the competition pool. So, the therapy pool should be completed probably during the holidays, right at the end of December, and so then I would expect the staff to be able to get in and ready it for opening during the month of January. So, we would get it open at some point there, probably late January, early February, and once it's functioning properly, then we can close Williams, and it would be available for sale to the developers. Based on the timelines that Mr. Davis laid out, I would expect that the developers would come back to us to execute that purchase agreement within the first quarter of '17, and then that process would move forward.
So, it would be safe to say that at the beginning of 2017, we can start moving on council?
I think, so there's two different issues. That, what I just laid out is a timeline one. I would expect us to be able to move forward on the sale of the property here and make those particular funds available, but those funds are not sufficient to do the full redevelopment that's currently contemplated. So, we'll need to add those funds to other funds that are raised in order to really move forward on the full renovation and construction that we've discussed for Council High School. I don't have a good timeline for that, and it's certainly something that the Alumni Association, I know, is engaged in fundraising efforts. So, their efforts, along with ours, ultimately, the success of those will define how quickly we could move. I think we would all love to be able to say that we move forward in 2017, but I think it's really gonna be dependent on those other funds becoming available and adding to the sales proceeds from the property.
I am encouraged that we have enough latitude to set a date and to have resources to start. Finally, we are in a position to move forward. But this weekend, I want to be able to give, and you and I may need to sit down further from here in terms of a starting point. We're gonna have people from all over the country and town this weekend, and I need to be able to say to them in a very solid way, the commitment is there. This administration, our mayor, has already committed, counsel, but I do want to be able to say, and I'll sit with you after the meeting, if we can get a tentative date that we're going to start, because we've been talking the last two years about where we're going with that particular project. And of course, I'll say follow-up more about it in a little bit when I speak on my time to speak tonight. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Dr. Showers. Any further questions, council members? Thank you, Mr. Hamilton, and Ms. Scripture.
Council members, good evening, and thank you very much for this opportunity to give you a preview of the city's new website. We're extremely excited about our new product, and basically, it was time for a new look and feel. Our current website, which has served us very well, has been around for almost eight years, and so a lot has changed in terms of browsers and users and our needs and technology. So, to that end, as we began working on the website, we had some key considerations. And number one, first and foremost, was easy access to information for our citizens and our businesses. They are our prime customer, and we wanted to make sure that we were serving them well. And number two, which was also incredibly important, about 70% of our users use this to access websites. They're not always on desktops, and while desktops are still important, we really weren't serving the mobile customer well, mobile and tablet. So, we had to rethink the way that we were presenting information. So, with that in mind, we went back and we did a lot of research. We talked to citizens. We spoke to businesses. We listened to their suggestions and comments. We looked at other cities. We looked at best practices, and we worked with a local designer, Adrianne Van Kirk of Fave Creative, and a local programmer, Rob Clark, to design the site. We did the bulk of the work in-house to save money, which was very important to the mayor. That was his mandate, along with a few others, and we're extremely proud of the product. So, right now, what I'd like to do is just take you on a brief tour. We will not go through the entire site. You've been very patient this evening with the presentations, but at the same time, we do want you to be aware of some of the important changes that we have made. The old site, the existing site that we have now, was about 6,000 individual pages. So, the, one of the first things that we did is we knew we needed to go on a diet. We're in an age of information overload, and when websites really first became popular and people started realizing they could put lots of information up, that's exactly what they did. They threw everything up there. So, now we realize that users are drowning in content, and we need to be more conscious about the type of content that we put up there and the format in which we do so. So, in reducing the content on our current site, we didn't want to lose anything that anybody really needed. So, we wanted to make sure we retained what was needed, got rid of the excess. So, we charged ourselves that we would no longer post content that we did not own and curate and generate. So, if it's not something the city produces, there's so many other entities in the communities that are doing that well. So, with that in mind, just start at the top of the site, and I apologize, this particular browser window is not gonna be quite as friendly here. Here we go. It's not gonna show the entire site on the side, but you'll see at the top, you have a home button, but there's some important links to the Airport Authority, the Chamber of Commerce, our city schools, partners at the libraries, Downtown Huntsville Inc., Entertainment and Events, Our Valley Events, and the Convention and Visitors Bureau. For guests coming to town, they can hit all of those key links and get exactly to where they need without bearing down into our website. So, that was important. The other thing that was extremely important is Huntsville's an international city, so we wanted to make sure that we offered our website in many different languages. Another key consideration that citizens wanted, sometimes you go to a city's website and you just don't know where to look, so we wanted a dynamic search bar. And really and truly, we're absolutely delighted, so far, we have yet to find a keyword that does not pull up the correct page. So, if you find one that does, so please let us know, and we will work on that. We have a very good SEO. The next thing we did is our current site, if you'll notice, is pretty much organized by departments. Well, a citizen doesn't necessarily know who fixes the road. Is it Kathy Martin in engineering? Is it Public Works? Sometimes they even think that it's the Public Transportation Department. So, we designed the site around topics and users. So, I'm a resident. These are key categories that would appeal to me as a resident. Garbage and recycling is one of the number-one hits on the website. Parks and Recreation, neighborhoods, cemeteries, these are things, streets and transportation, these are things that matter to residents. Businesses, bid a project, codes and ordinances, file a claim, pay taxes, get a license. This is the way our citizens think and our businesses, and so this is the way we have structured the website. Development, much the same way, environment, and you'll also notice some of the tabs are repeated. You can get to certain sections of the website from many different ways, but the site is, it's a coding system that duplicates it, so the content only is updated one time and it universally updates it throughout the site. And that's to keep us from having redundant and out-of-date copy. The government section, we did go ahead and add a section for our departments. If you like to look up a department, you may do so, and it'll give you the basic information about the department, but the information regarding what that department does is pretty much housed elsewhere. And then a quick dashboard for city services. For our council members, we want you to know that on the city council page, which we have created, we wanted to make sure that you were well-served. I promise all five council members are there. The screen is...
Well, you got the form.
There we go. There we are.
I was gonna say, I've been deleted anyway.
No. So, we have agendas and archives. You probably are aware, you have a new Novus Agenda program coming that's very dynamic, that's gonna be wonderful for the council. Boards and commission, find your district. Each one of you has your own page and your own calendar, so citizens can very easily look up when a council meeting is, when you're having a town hall meeting, things that you're interested in for your section. Each one of you also has a news page when you click on the council member, and this is something that we have discussed, where you have information that relates particularly to your district. So, we wanted to make sure that you were well-served in this new website. Go back to the homepage. Another thing that we added to the site, this is in blue right now, but this is actually an alert feature. If we have severe weather, if City Hall is closed, that will turn red, and we'll be able to post emergency notices. If we land a major project, we can also put a green banner and welcome Remington or whatever it is. But we also have pre-built emergency pages in the back, so we can link to those quickly, because if it's a weather, snow weather day, a lot of the information doesn't change. It's just the locations and times, and we want to make sure that we're prepared. Really promoting Huntsville Connect, our customer service app. We have a dynamic media center that really maximizes the social media channels. We've worked really, really hard to integrate social, e-newsletters, live streaming, HSB-TV, all of that into our social media. Again, a calendar, which is a master calendar. Different departments that have dynamic content also have channels. Parks and Recreation, The Big Picture, departments, even Kathy Martin, she's able to put her bid list and opening times and dates there. It's a great way. You can click on the master calendar and sort through categories just to see what's going on in the city. Residents, we know they don't have time to sift, so we created a toolkit, and these are just some of the key services. Absolutely delighted at our GIS department. They have been phenomenal. We have asked them to work with us on creating an easy way for citizens to look up information. So, if I type in an address... There we go. Here is my basic information. These are my elected officials, the schools, the sanitation, my garbage pickup days, other information, and there's another map that you can click on, GIS has created. If you put your address in here, it is, parks will come up, schools will come up, anything that is in your particular area will come up, and you can scan it by miles, the distance that you want to look. This is a terrific tool, and other cities are maximizing these maps. Our GIS department has an open data section where coders can go in and pull out data and create applications. Very exciting and important for the city. So, we're very proud of them and for their assistance. You'll find their mapping services linked throughout the entire website. If you're on a park page, you can look up trailheads. If you're in the cemetery, you can look up historic markers, lots of good things. We have programs and initiatives, top requests, again, city news, another feed here. We're ADA compliant. Very excited about this. As Mayor Battle has said, it should launch at the end of the month. Another thing that he has mandated is that all of the forms be in an online form, format wherever possible, where you can actually fill it out online, submit it online, and our ITS department is working on that as well. And hopefully, in the coming months, we will have those completed. Another service that we should be providing for our citizens. So, thank you for this opportunity to give you a brief tour. Does anybody have any questions?
Council members?
The last part you said about concerning forms, does that mean that the, like, building permits and all those forms that are, you know, are needed can be done online?
Anything that can be turned into an online form is being turned into an online form. And obviously, the Inspection Department already has many online services, and what we're trying to do is streamline a lot of that information, but we did have a lot of forms that just were very easy to convert, and it just made more sense to go ahead and do so.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kline, Dr. Robinson.
How will the website...
How will the website connect with the new soft, the new meeting management software? Will there be any connections there?
Are you talking about the Novus Agenda? Yes. Once the new Novus Agenda, which is your new city council agenda programming, and also for boards and commissions, it will embed in this new site. So users will be, it'll be seamless for the user, but they'll be able to go in and search for different agendas. They'll even be able to queue up a word in a video of a city council meeting, and actually just queue up that section and watch it. Lots of great opportunities there.
That is great. Any further questions, council members?
That was a great presentation. In fact, all of them were great.
Thank you. Great work.
We certainly commend you and your staff for being very innovative with those kinds of activities. Thank you all again. Thank you. Okay. We're now at agenda item number four. Council members, first of all, there aren't any resolutions for presentations. We're now at agenda item 4B2, adoptions only. 4B2A is a resolution congratulating the William Hooper Council Alumni Association, Inc., on celebrating the legacy of the historic William Hooper Council High School, to be held at the Huntsville Marriott on August the 13th, 2016, brought by Dr. Showers. The chair moves for approval.
Second.
Seconded by Dr. Showers. Discussion. Ready for the question. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose. The ayes have it. It carries. Dr. Showers.
Mr. President, this weekend, this resolution will be presented to the Alumni Association on their gala and a brunch. This will take place on Saturday, and at that time, I will make these presentations on behalf of the mayor and the city council.
Thank you, Dr. Showers. Now to agenda item 4B2. 4B2 is a resolution recognizing saved in the city for hosting its 2016 annual conference at the Von Braun Civic Center, August the 19th through the 21st, 2016, brought by the chair. Chair moves for approval.
Second.
Seconded by Dr. Showers. Discussion. Ready for the question. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose. The ayes have it. It carries. 4B2 is a, 4B2C is a resolution congratulating Dr. Clarence M. Johnson on the celebration of his 22nd pastoral anniversary, to be held at the Poplar Creek Missionary Baptist Church in Athens on August the 21st, 2016, brought by the chair. Chair moves for approval.
Second.
Seconded by Dr. Showers. Discussion. Ready for the question. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose. The ayes have it. It carries. And I will be presiding over his pastoral anniversary, which is an honor and a privilege. And I know you all remember Dr. Clarence M. Johnson. He's usually here at the council. We're now at agenda item 4C, other special recognitions. Any special recognition? Now at agenda item 4D, announcements. Let the record reflect that Mr. Russell is not here. I believe he's out of town with business. And agenda item number 15Z, as in Zulu, has been deleted. 15Z, as in Zulu, has been deleted. Agenda item 14E, as in Echo, is for unanimous consent.
Which one is that, Mr. President?
14E, as in Echo, under new business, will require unanimous consent. And it's the introduction of an ordinance declaring certain equipment as surplus and to be salvaged by the insurance provider. This is brought by fleets, and it will require unanimous consent. If you'd like to explain that, Mr. Hamilton.
Members of council, some of you may be aware that two or three weeks ago, we had a piece of equipment from Public Works that's out. They are out doing a major drainage improvement project, kind of in our far northwestern area in District Five. One of the track hoes had a malfunction, actually caught on fire. Fortunately, the operator was able to get off the equipment without injury, but it did destroy the piece of equipment. The insurance company has already reached agreement with us on the value for that, and part of that is they will actually come and recover it from the site. It's our desire, one, to not leave the piece of equipment out there adjacent to that neighborhood longer than it needs to be, and that's why we've asked to accelerate this consideration as opposed to just introducing tonight. It also allows us to accelerate getting the funds, so that we can get those back into the fleet account to help fund the replacement. We already have a replacement piece of equipment come in, but we need to go ahead and move the money if available. So we're asking for you to provide unanimous consent, to go ahead and accelerate it and consider the item tonight.
Any further discussion? Council members, we'll take this up.
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
Before we move on, I noticed we have a scout in the audience. Could we have him come introduce himself for the record?
Absolutely, Mr. Kling. Sir, if you'll go to the nearest microphone, state your name, troop number, and maybe what you're working on, please.
My name is Ben Goss, and I am in Troop 96 currently. I am working on my communications badge.
Welcome, sir. Welcome, and you're doing exceedingly well. Thank you, Mr. Goss, and thank you, Councilman Kling. Council members, we're now at agenda item number five. There isn't any business with outside legal representation. Now to agenda item number six, public hearings. Six A are public hearings to be held. Now is the time and place for a public hearing for Cecilio A. Kentish, doing business ads Orbitz Super Shuttle LLC, for the issuance of a special shuttle license. This was set July 28, 2016, at a regular council meeting. Discussion. Mr. Brown.
Mr. President, this is an existing privately owned and operated transportation company that wishes to expand their business. The resolution before you would authorize them to provide an airport shuttle service. That'll be a regional service where they'll transport people from Huntsville to other airports in our region, Birmingham, Nashville, and the likes. It's in order for your consideration after the public hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Anyone from the public wishes to address the council on this particular matter? Mr. Timberlake, state your name and address for the record, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ralph Timberlake, 2117 Acton Drive, Huntsville, Alabama, 3581.
Thank you, sir.
I rise in opposition to this, Mr. Chairman. It is very difficult for us to be able to ascertain the provenness of this company as it goes to and from our jurisdiction, as it's going to either Nashville or to Birmingham. It is out of the city's jurisdiction. Therefore, I would ask that the city reconsider granting them any type of conveyance licenses for that purpose, because it would, I think, put an undue hardship on our enforcement agencies. I think it would also allow for unwilling people to use this type of service to abscond and hide from the eyes of those who could see if they are doing something that is not in the best interest of this city. As you well know, Huntsville is viewed as one of the major hubs for illegal activities, i.e. drugs, also human trafficking. I believe that these kind of conveyance entities leads to aiding and abetting these unwilling entities in doing that. It encumbers these city and its law enforcement agency in monitoring and tracking these type of activities. The difficulties, the additional costs, should not be borne by the citizen. And to that end, I respectfully ask that this council not approve this in the interest of public safety and the best interest of this city in general. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Timberlake. Anyone else wishes to address the council on this particular matter?
Jackie Reed. Jack Coman Drive. I think this was already voted on at the last council meeting. Was it, or brought up?
Ms. Reed?
Anyway, anyway, my question is, is it just between here and the airports and out of town? Are we using this bus service around this city for a lot of things? Remember, I asked that. Why were we leasing out the shuttle buses? Were we going to have them running through the city? And why there was a city not having the buses? Tonight, I heard, it's just to the airport. So we need to clarify some real facts when we come up here and bring up issues. I'd like some answers on some of the things we do and why we do them. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Reed. Mr. Brown, could you address both concerns? I believe Mr. Timberlake's concern is with the illegal activity, and I remember that even our local taxicab drivers can't engage in illegal acts like transporting prostitutes, known prostitutes for the purpose of prostitution, and those kinds of things, but those are things that our law enforcement will address.
Yeah. Mr. President, this is a company that will charge a significant fee to transport people to other airports in the area. It won't be limited to Nashville, Birmingham. It'll be any of the regional airports. They will be under our purview, my department and the police department's purview while they're in Huntsville. We will inspect them and those sorts of things. Once they leave our city limits, they'll be under the purview of the Public Service Commission. They'll have to have Public Service Commission's licensure, insurance, and those kinds of things, so they'll be overseen by them as well when they're out of the city. And Ms. Reed, we're in the enviable position, I think, of having multiple transportation providers come to us and want to provide public transportation services. These are all vital to a growing city, and we certainly welcome the new services, and they're coming in based on the need that they had expressed to them by the public for the services. They're privately owned, privately operated, and we do our best to encourage them and work with them to have successful transportation business. It's an important part of the overall transportation puzzle for us.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Anyone else wishes to address the council on this particular matter? Hearing none. The public hearing is now closed. Is there a motion? Motion by the chair?
Second.
Seconded by Dr. Showers. Discussion.
Mr. President, I guess a question I have or concern. Mr. Brown, this looks like we're authorizing something, and of course, I know there's free enterprise, and that's an argument that I support, but aren't we doing something that's basically kind of undercutting our own airport to make it easier for companies to come, transport people to Nashville, Atlanta, or wherever?
Well, certainly, people have the option to fly from whatever airport they wish. This company will just give them an opportunity to provide transportation there and back, eliminates parking fees, things of that nature. So that's their primarily, primary role.
Have they put out what they're, what they're going to be charging for?
I do not know what they're going to charge, Councilman Kling. I can find that out for you.
I mean, I didn't know. Is that, is that part of the rates? I know that, for example, with taxis, whenever there's a change in the rates, the council has to approve, and there's some regulation.
Yeah. There are less restrictions on most of these companies than there are on the taxicab services because these companies provide a higher level of service that is not something that, you know, folks on limited incomes might have to take advantage of, so there's less restrictions on their rates. I'll add also that the existing company that provided this transportation went out of business six, eight months ago, so this company is probably filling a void that's existing in the market now for transportation to and from the regional airports.
Any further question, council members? Ready for the question? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose.
No.
Mr., let the record reflect that Mr. Kling is in opposition. It carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Now to agenda item number 6B, public hearings to be set. 6B1 is a resolution to set a public hearing for the Transcity Cab and Airport Shuttle, LLC, doing business ads, Big Blue Airport Shuttle, for the issuance of an airport shuttle license. This will be set for August the 25th, 2016, at a regular council meeting, brought by Parking and Public Transit. Chair moves for approval.
Second.
Seconded by Dr. Showers. Ready for the question? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose. The ayes have it. It carries. Agenda item 6B2 is a resolution to set a public hearing on an ordinance rezoning property lying on the south side of Hardeman Road and on the east side of Seekers Road, from neighborhood business C1 District to Residence 2 District. This will be set for September the 22nd, 2016, at a regular council meeting, brought by Planning. Chair moves for approval.
Second.
Seconded by Dr. Rob, Dr. Showers. Ready for the question? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose. The ayes have it. It carries. 6B3 is a resolution to set a public hearing on an ordinance rezoning, zoning newly annexed property lying on the south side of Hobbs Island Road and on the north of Bill Matthews Road to Residence 2A District. This is set for September the 22nd, 2016, at a regular council meeting. Chair moves for approval.
Second.
Seconded by Dr. Showers. Ready for the question? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose. The ayes have it. It carries. 6B4 is a resolution to set a public hearing on an ordinance to amend Article 92, Board of Adjustments, Sections 92.5, Powers and Duties, Subsection 92.5.3, permitted uses as special exceptions by amending subsection 92.5.3, subsection 12, to update language concerning private schools and other child facilities. This will be set for September the 22nd, 2016, at a regular council meeting. Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Motion by Dr. Showers. Seconded by Mr. Kling. Ready for the question? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose. The ayes have it. It carries. Agenda item 6B is a resolution to set a public hearing on an ordinance rezoning property lying on the north side of Meadows Boulevard, east of Old Highway 431, from Residence 1A District to Residence 2B District. This will be set for September the 22nd, 2016, at a regular council meeting. Chair moves for approval.
Second.
Seconded by Dr. Showers. Ready for the question? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose. The ayes have it. It carries. Council members, we will take this up at the respective scheduled council meetings. We're now at agenda item number seven, communications and reports. As I call your name, if you will go to the microphone, you'll have approximately three minutes to address the council. Dr. Williams, state your name and address for the record, please.
Dee Williams, 103 Cedar Rumor Drive, Huntsville.
Welcome.
I thank you guys for having me and letting me come up and speak. I'm just a country boy from South Georgia that moved here for graduate school, but tonight I need your help articulating an article of the law that you guys have set forth for us to follow. The article is 5-106, and it states that it should be unlawful for any persons to keep any animal in a corral in the city unless such corral is 12,000 square feet per animal, 10,000 for each additional animal kept. My question for you all is, well, I've spoke, I've spoke to Legal, I tried to get a meeting with Legal. To this day, I have not got a call back or an email back. I was able to talk to Mr. Hamilton. He blessed me with his, with his time today as well as the state vet, but still, today, I'm unclear about one question. And the question is, what does keep and what does kept mean? Depending on where you're from, or depending on your education level, that word kept and keep can be, can mean too many different things. It's super gray in this ordinance, because kept could mean living overnight, which one of the animal control people told me. But then again, I was told today, if you put an animal in that area, so if it's going to be gray, it has to be gray on both sides, the city side as well as the taxpayer's side. And my question to you guys is, in this ordinance, 5-106, what does keep and what does kept mean?
Okay. Thank you, sir. Is Ms. Dr. Sheppard, Karen Sheppard-Hill? Oh, Karen Hill, Sheppard.
Karen, it doesn't matter. It's Karen Hill Sheppard, but I answer to anything. It's very confusing.
I do, too. Thank you so kindly.
So, yes, we met today and spoke with Dee Williams, and tomorrow morning, he and I are going to meet at his property and walk it, discuss all these issues about keep and kept, and talk through it.
Great.
See how the horses are normally kept.
Great.
I'll be seeing him at 6:00 in the morning.
Wow. Great.
He's an early riser.
Thank you, Dr. Sheppard-Hill. Sir, hopefully, we'll get to the bottom of that. Thank you, sir. Mr. Isaiah Ash.
My name is Isaiah Ash. I'm resident at 1617 Brookholt Circle, Huntsville, 35816. I'm here to congratulate the council, Public Works, for correcting a problem in my neighborhood with drainage. for correcting a problem in my neighborhood with drainage. Several years ago, I appeared before the council and told them about the situation in my neighborhood where I lived 38 years. The city resurfaced that street. And when they resurfaced that street, they did not consider the drainage. There was no flow of water. When it rains, the water just pooled in front of my house as well as my neighbor's house. We could not get to the driveway because of the rainwater. And last October, I counsel, I contacted the city council, Kling, Councilman Kling, Councilman Culver, sent you an email. And on May, this May, Public Works came out and fixed the problem. And I indicated to you that it would not work unless we have a really heavy rain. In a couple of months, we did not have that.
Yes.
But in the last couple of months, two months, rain came and it seemed to be flowing pretty good. What I want to tell the citizens, you have to be persistent on issues that you are involved with. You got to really dog the city council, councilmen and women, to let them know how you feel about a problem. But it makes, take you longer to get it corrected. It took me two and a half years. I never had that problem until they did resurface. But now it's corrected, and I want to thank you, Public Works, Councilman Kling, Councilman Showers, and Council you, Mr. President. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mr. Ash. And Ms. Jackie Reed?
Good evening.
Good evening.
I guess I want to thank you for laying public input. It's the first night I've said, "I guess." Anyway, I've never seen so many presentations of what's going on in the city. I just wonder if we're campaigning a little up there. What really bothers me, it's okay if I say that, it's okay. Anyway. I hadn't thrown it in yet, Mayor Battle. Anyway, I'm just saying that I have learned a lot. I want to thank you if you backed off upon a concrete pad in Big Spring Park for the ice skaters. Because I don't know where any of you all were years ago when we promised when they tore down the senior center, we were not going to tear up that park and keep concreting it and tearing it up. Green space is supposed to stay there. So, if some of you out of tanners don't believe that, we're going to fight to keep that green space. Thank you for backing off of that. That was half of my issue tonight. Another one is, City Center. What's going to happen? We paid $6.8 million. Is that light on to me already? I need to control the light tonight because I just started.
You're doing fine, Ms. Reed. Go ahead.
Thank you. City Center, who's paying for those big fine parking garages? It's going up. I want the copy of that lease. I was told it's a 90-year lease. That little 20 years sitting up there didn't, is not what it is. It's a 90-year lease with $144,000 a year. We've already lost money because we paid $6,800 for the Holiday Inn. Don't forget that. Put that in that budget. But anyway, I got to get off on Mid-Center out there in the Madison Square Mall. I did come to your meeting the other night with Mr. Will Cover, and I met the two developers. It's already got a contract. People have been working on this small thing for two years. Two years I met the developers. It's already been talked about. You've already passed a lot of things. I seen here tonight where the public might get involved if you, if they come to you with some of this stuff. But you've already voted on this stuff. It's too late. It's a little bit late to do the right thing. You need to let the public know what's going on and get involved before you pass all this stuff. I met the developers. I told them mall's not coming down. If you want two lawsuits, I'll help you. They said they're not coming down, so you better do some renegotiating. Anyway, I found out through the tax assessor's office that local investors own the mall. Local. I got one more word I'm going to say, even if you cut me off. And I found out that our mayor and the developer, Mr. Scrimpser of Stone Middle School, owns some property between Jordan Lane and that mall out there. And I'm concerned that the good old boy system is kicking in, and we got to bust up the good old boy system. I appreciate your involvement. I did my homework. My son said, "You better do it before you start something." Well, I did.
Your time is up, Ms. Reed. Do you need another minute?
I'd like to ask the mayor what he's going to do with Joe Davis Stadium. I know what he's going to do between here and the mall, but I'm against all of that. You should have brought that before the public, before you voted on it. That is outrageous and ridiculous. I've asked for that master plan to come in here and show it to the public. You've yet to do it. But the people's got their eyes on you because I'm never going to quit. I'd like for you to hold A and 15H. Thanks. And if I'm mean to you, I love you. It don't matter. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Ms. Reed. Mayor? I'm sorry. I was going to defer to the mayor to see if he wanted to address any of those questions. I need to repeat those, mayor.
I think I got a couple of them.
I can hit them on if you want.
You want to start on the?
So, I think the first question was, who's building the parking garages in the city center? The developer is building those two parking garages that Mr. Davis showed in the city center site plan. Those are both being built by the public dollars. As to the return on investment, what he showed was just 20 years of that full lease. And so, $28 million is only over 20 years. So, of course, if you add more years, then it only gets bigger, not smaller. So, that return on investment will continue to grow even more substantially over the initial investment that the taxpayers made in that property. So, our expectation is the numbers would get even better than the current very good ones that concern you. As to Joe Davis Stadium, it is where it is right now. As we've said multiple times publicly, we have had a private developer who has approached us and started a conversation about redeveloping that for a, for a recreation center. That may or may not happen. He's got to continue to do some work on that. But we have had that conversation with him. And if that is, if we think that's potentially a fruitful endeavor, then that's something that we would have to bring before council and discuss publicly. And there's a lot of decisions associated with that, that the council would have to make and obviously in a public forum. So, still a lot to be determined. We've had people ask us if minor league baseball could return to that stadium. In fact, we've been told by officials from minor league baseball, they don't intend to put minor league baseball back in that stadium. It has some significant maintenance issues associated with it and is not really a design that modern baseball would like to go into for, at the professional level. So, a lot to be determined and a lot of discussions to occur publicly before the future of Joe Davis Stadium is determined.
Thank you, Mr. Hamilton.
Council President, if I could just add on a couple of those?
Yes, Mr. Davis.
Just wanted to offer to Ms. Reed. I have previously sat for about an hour on City Center. I provided the lease, the PowerPoint presentations and walked through those. I'm happy to do that again, Ms. Reed. For you or any member of the public, we're very open and transparent about what we do. We will always be that way. Mid-City for Madison Square Mall is at early stages. Will be before the public in this council body with other things as we move forward. It will be a very slow process, but a very successful one. But with City Center, I think we have come in this chamber many, many times to be open and transparent to the public, to you. And my door is always open to talk to anybody about that and share that information.
Thank you, Mr. Davis.
And could I have the final say on this? Ms. Reed brought up the idea that I own property between Madison Square Mall and Jordan Lane. And I do own property between Madison Square Mall and Jordan Lane. I think we bought that property back in 2003. It was myself, Randall Scrimpser, and Dr. Claim Salmons bought it together. It's 22,000 square foot offices there. In 2003, it was about 10% leased out, and so, we went to work on it. And I was the managing partner of it. So, I went to work on it. And we redid the suites. We refixed the suites. We renovated and we upgraded. We spent money on the project. And we re-landscaped. We made the place look very, very nice. By 2004, we were 80% occupied, and by 2005, I think we were 100% occupied. We bought the property because we liked being in the proximity of Research Park. We liked being in the proximity of Madison Square Mall. And at that time, Madison Square Mall was going strong. And we thought that Madison Square Mall would be a great asset, would be a plus for our project. And plus, we had a lot of offices in there, 22,000 square foot offices. And we leased them out a little bit less than what they do at Research Park. And so, we had a pretty good market for being able to lease out offices in there. You know, I have probably nine different properties across the city. They're my retirement. That's what I plan on using for retirement one day when people get tired of me being mayor and doing mayor work. But, and those nine different pieces of property are probably under three different company names. But, you know, I wish that I had, you know, in 2003, when we bought that property, we bought it as an investment, and it's been a good investment. It's been a nice investment, and we're proud to have it. And we were proud to be able to fix it up and make it look like something and be a part of Huntsville's success story out of it.
Thank you, Mayor Battle. Mr. Kling?
Mr. President, I think the, Mr. Davis already brought up what I was going to say. In fact, I'd kind of been after him. He's in all these projects, putting in a 20-year payout. And I know even with depreciation, if you do the math, talking about a 90-year lease, $28 million over 20 years probably factors out to be about $100 million over a 90-year lease. And I think that's a pretty good payback, even though the old Holiday Inn was lost. But I think the city council at the time, and I was one of the ones, I think that was a good decision to buy the property because after the Embassy Suites Hotel was constructed, I think the last thing we wanted to do was to see those Holiday Inn rooms all of a sudden get bulldozed down and become an office building and reduce the number of rooms that we have adjacent to the Civic Center. And things are changing around, more revenues being addressed. And I think the hotel rooms are still going to be there. And I think there's some exciting things about reaching that 1,000-room threshold. But $100 million is not a bad turnaround for the property. And I think the administration made a good decision. And as far as an auditorium presentation, I'm not running for anything. Well, maybe for a couple of years or whatever. But I had asked, you know, about bringing that up because I thought this was a great thing for southwest Huntsville. And I think it's a good thing for you all to get out and let people see. And more people are going to see these types of presentations at these council meetings than at a work session where we might have maybe, you know, 10, 15, or a couple dozen, you know, citizens actually come to it. So, I'm all for these presentations. I think they're good for the public, and that's who we work for.
Thank you, Mr. Kling. Ms. Allison Dillon-Jockin, Leadership Class 21.
Good evening. Allison Dillon-Jockin, 618 Summer Cove Circle Northwest, 35757, Council District 5. In addition to being a Huntsville City resident, as most of you know, I'm Executive Director of Arts Huntsville. I just wanted to speak very briefly tonight to say thank you for your consideration of the infrastructure improvements to Big Spring Park, particularly the much-needed improvements to the seawalls, the sidewalks, the shore power, and the general public space. Now, in addition to being Executive Director of Arts Huntsville, I'm one who enjoys the park with my family. I work directly across from the park each day. And of course, I partner with the city on many arts and entertainment events in the park throughout the year. And so, I spend many, many, many hours in the park throughout the year. And while both landscape management and general services have done incredible work trying to maintain the crumbling infrastructure in the park, these improvements are very much needed. We have a real jewel with this green space in our downtown core, but it needs to be preserved and it needs to be improved. So, I am very, very grateful to the work that Mayor Battle, John Hamilton, the city staff, and everyone on the city council has done in considering these improvements. And I personally appreciate your timely consideration of these improvements because, as Mr. Hamilton alluded to, Panoply 2017 will open its doors 259 days from tomorrow. And I, for one, look forward to welcoming people to a greatly improved Big Spring Park. So, again, I thank you for your consideration of these improvements. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Johnkin. And I know that the Arts Huntsville will be in very good hands. Thank you. Mr. Ralph Timberlake?
Ralph Timberlake, 2117, Akron Drive, Huntsville, Alabama 35810.
Thank you, sir.
I rise because I'm reminded of something I've heard or read once that says, "The city is beautiful, but the water is poison." As you well know, that's a poetic statement here maybe, but it's a true statement in some of our Western residents in some of the parts of our state, and particularly in the state of Michigan. The reason I say that is, while I've heard when they stole the virtues of all of this development, we seem to be having an autophogenic position, that man is the only thing that counts in this universe. And I submit that is an error, that man should be a great partner and a steward. As the old saying is, "Let the greatest amongst you be the servant." While we destroy all of these habitats of these other places, of these animals and other creatures in the interest of making our city grow, we're creating an urban problem. And I have been here many times asking you to do your due diligence in considering urban sprawl. I had the displeasure of being in Sister City, Madison, the other night as I heard the citizen clamor about the urban sprawl in Madison. And it seems as though the leadership at that utility company was antithetical to their pleas and their concern. I hope that this city would not be such. And my last concern is that the Human Relations Committee, Your Honor, Mayor, are doing you a disservice because they fail to understand that there are certain entities, i.e. the federal government officials, I want to underscore the word officials, do not have an unfettered immunity to deprive any other citizen under your auspices of due process of law. I understand that the United States Postal Service is one of those agencies that is doing it. And if you read in the United States Constitution, you will find it is the only government agency that is a business. And Your Honor, I beseech you to ask your Human Relations Committee to go back and do their due diligence and be empathetic as well as sympathetic to both the egregious public servants and the aggriever public servant. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Timberlake. And just to comment on that, with the growth that we are experiencing in Huntsville as it relates to expansion, like, for example, Zert Road, we relocated the cave shrimp. We now are able to relocate other species. So, our growth is not really, is not endangering any of our wildlife. And at Madison Square Mall, where Mid-City is going, is nothing but asphalt primarily, 100-plus acres of asphalt. So, we're going to have a 38-acre park in that area with lots of greenery. So, it's really going to be improved upon. Okay? Thank you, sir. And Mayor, is there anything you want to comment on, sir?
Just, I guess the last one, Ralph, is, you know, I read the letter that Human Relations sent you. They don't have any purview over the U.S. Postal Office. I mean, there's not anything that they can do with the U.S. Postal Office. And, you know, I think that you're, you were asking, you know, and if I read it right, and if you've got, if you've got a different reading of it, that it was one that it was, that they didn't understand how to address it. And I think that their purview is more city-oriented, not federal-oriented.
Thank you, Mayor Battle. We're now at agenda item number eight, Huntsville Utility Items. 8A is a resolution authorizing the approval to purchase property for future TVA delivery point substation, PR 10224289, brought by Huntsville Utilities. The chair moves for approval.
Second.
Second by Dr. Showers. Discussion, Mr. Girdes?
Thank you, Mr. Culver. This is for the purchase of just short of nine acres very near the New Market community for future construction of a substation that will serve that area, which will also serve as a TVA delivery point. That is the continued effort to make our system more robust and to stand up against storm events like what we had in 2011 and help us to restore service more quickly when we do have events like that.
Thank you, sir. Any discussion, council members? Ready for the question?
I'm sorry. Ms. Reed asked how much? $135,000.
Okay. Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Mr. Girdes. Ready for the question? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? The ayes have it. It carries. Thank you, sir. Now, agenda item number nine, Board Appointments. 9A Board Appointments to be voted on. 9A1 is a resolution to appoint Jason Lowe to the Alabama Constitutional Village, historic Huntsville Depot Board for a term to expire June 26, 2018, nominated July 28, 2016.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Clean, second by Dr. Showers. Discussion, ready for the question. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? The ayes have it, it carries. And that is for a term to expire June 26, 2019. Thank you. Nine A Two is a res, resolution to appoint Bill Pippens to the Alabama Constitutional Village Historic Huntsville Depot Board for a term to expire June 26, 2019, nominated July 28, 2016, brought by Dr. Robinson.
Move to approve.
Second by the Chair. Motion by Dr. Robinson, second by the Chair. Discussion, ready for the question. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? The ayes have it, it carries. Nine A Three is a resolution to reappoint Kim Ogle to the Alabama Constitutional Village Historic Huntsville Depot Board for a term to expire June 26, 2019, nominated July 28, 2016, brought by Dr. Robinson.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Dr. Robinson, second by Dr. Showers. Discussion, ready for the question. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? The ayes have it, it carries. Now at Agenda Item Nine, B, Board Appointment Nominations. Nine B One is nomination of Wallace Kirkpatrick for reappointment to the Huntsville Madison County Marina and Port Authority for a term to expire July 1, 2021, brought by Dr. Robinson. Nine B Two is the nomination of Sarah Gessler for reappointment to the Museum Board of the City of Huntsville, Seat Eight, for a term to expire August 13, 2022, brought by Dr. Robinson and the Chair. Nine B Three is nomination of Virginia Rice for reappointment to the Museum Board of the City of Huntsville, Seat Nine, for a term to expire August 13, 2022, brought by Dr. Showers. Nine B Four is the nomination of Shirley Corbett for appointment to the Beautification Board for a term to expire October 1, 2019, brought by Dr. Robison, Dr. Robinson. We'll take these up at our next regular scheduled council meeting. Are there any additional board appointment nominations?
Mr. President, I would like to submit for reappointment the Reverend Willie L. Hinton to the Huntsville Police Citizen Advisory Council, District One, for a two-year term to expire June 22, 2018.
Thank you, Dr. Showers. Any additional appointments?
Mr. President, I'd like to, I'm not sure if I'm nominating or if it's just appointing, but Pam Cobb for reappointment to the, to be the District Four Representative on the Police Advisory Council.
And this would be your appointment, Mr. Clean, that doesn't require council approval?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And I have a reappointment also. I was going to make it during my comments, but I'll make it now. Reappointment, Vicki Guerrero to the Huntsville Police Citizens Advisory Council, District Three, for a two-year term to expire June 22, 2018.
Thank you, Dr. Robinson. And the Chair wishes to reappoint Mr. James Bailey to the Police Citizen Advisory Board for a second, for another two-year term. Any additional appointments? We're now at Agenda Item Number Ten, Approval of Expenditures. Ten A is a resolution authorizing expenditures for payment. Dr. Showers?
Thank you, Mr. President. I submit $5,741,925.94 for payment.
Second.
Motion has been made for expenditures of payments in the amount of $5,741,925.94, second by Mr. Clean. Discussion, ready for the question. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? The ayes have it, it carries. Mr. Dr. Robinson, uh, Dr. Showers, is there a Finance Committee report, sir?
Uh, no.
No Finance Committee report. We're now at Agenda Item Number Eleven, Communications from the Mayor. Mayor Battle, you have the floor, sir.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to announce the following reappointments. Charlie Granger to the Research Park Board for a seven-year term to expire July 22, 2023. Lee Horton to the Huntsville Housing Authority for a five-year term to expire August 14, 2021. As many of you know, and as Ms. Dillon-Jockin knows, there are a lot of events happening right now. Music on the square, Green Street Market, if it's not raining, and I haven't seen any rain yet. Restaurant Week is in Huntsville through August 21 and Mrs. Battle's very glad to see that. And we have visited a couple of restaurants already just in previewing for Restaurant Week. Also, this, there's a free Friday night art walk in downtown on Friday night, of course, five to eight, and free movie in the park. And Aladdin is a movie this week that will happen. And also, we've got food trucks Friday in the lumberyard on August 19. Free Five Points Block Party featuring the festival atmosphere and outdoor music Saturday from five to nine. Lots of events going on. It's kind of a get-back-to-school, get-back-into-the groove time. And is Joy McKee out there? Joy? Joy has been selling a number of cemetery lots and could you give us a very brief report on the cemetery lots and how many you've sold and?
Uh, we've sold approximately $755,000 worth of property in the last couple of weeks. We have sold, we have left over 1,700 in regular plots. So we're looking for individuals to please make their appointments. The last of the people who are on a waiting list have now, they will be contacted this week. And so next week starts just the regular folks wanting to inquire and come in and make an appointment. So please call the cemetery at 427-5730 and make your appointment. Our lots will be selling out pretty quick and hope to get at least 2 million in the next two weeks.
You sold 500 to 600 lots already, is that right?
Yes, sir.
All right, good. Thank you so much for your expansion of the cemetery and giving everybody an opportunity.
Thank you, Mayor Battle. We're now at Agenda Item Number Twelve, Communications from Council Members. Dr. Showers, you have the floor, sir.
Thank you, Mr. President. I am delighted tonight to start with, went out to the airport, the mayor and others, ribbon-cutting press conference. We got a new airline in town that's gonna have a direct route from Huntsville to Memphis and it's supposed to start in September. They will start off with a charge of $99 to travel from here one way to Memphis. This weekend is busy. Saturday, the William Hooper Council Alumni Brunch is Saturday morning at 10 o'clock at the Marriott. They're asking all alumnus, alumnus of William Hooper Council to attend the brunch. And that afternoon, that evening at 6 o'clock, the William Hooper Council Alumni 50th Legacy Gala will be on at the Marriott and that will be at 6 o'clock Saturday evening. Alabama A&amp;M Resident Hall Groundbreaking at the Crunk Building, 4103 Meridian Street, that will be Thursday at 12 o'clock. The Mid-Side City Sneak Pete. I'm gonna thank Councilman Cover for inviting me to come to that affair. It was a delight to see what's coming to the old Madison Square Mall. I attended the DOJ Community Meeting at First Missionary Baptist Church where Reverend Scrugg is the pastor. It was attended by a large mass of people to raise questions to the DOJ about the decree and about the fact whether or not Huntsville is ready to go to unitary status. The Taste of Capital will be this Friday night, tomorrow night, at the Art Museum and it begins at 7 o'clock. All are invited to attend. The North Huntsville Business Association, Dr. Robinson, we met Wednesday and of course, we had a good meeting and we have got planned for September 28, a membership meeting. The location for that meeting, even though it's in September, has not been announced. It will be announced to the public later. We have identified 83 businesses in North Huntsville and we got a membership meeting coming on September 28. I also had the opportunity to attend two other ribbon cuttings. Jemison High School had its ribbon cutting this week and today, Jemison College Academy had its ribbon cutting today. And, Mr. President, that's going to end my report for tonight.
Thank you, Dr. Showers. Dr. Robinson?
One of the reasons we had so many presentations tonight is because we have so many good things going on that we need to share with the public. I had a couple of other meetings this week that I attended that also concern some of the good things that we have going on. One of them is the new South Huntsville Library. We are in a new phase of that, that effort right now. Commissioner Phil Riddick has largely been leading that and has permitted me to work with him on it. And we're now ready to hand it over to the South Huntsville community and Charlie Blas, formerly an executive with Teledyne Brown Engineering, is going to be heading up that effort for us. And he's already started to tap some of his friends to help. We have raised over $6 million of the $8.5 million needed. So we just need Mr. Blas and, and his committee to take us across the finish line and we are looking forward to seeing that happen. We also met this week with the South Huntsville Business Association. Sounds, Dr. Showers, like it was a week for business associations to meet. We met for the purposes of an update on the overpasses. And my intent in putting this meeting together with the Steering, South Huntsville Business Association Steering Committee was to not only share information, but also to give the businesses some hope. It's been a very challenging time for them. And the mayor and Kathy Martin and Shane Davis came and they certainly delivered on that message. We found out that the Benaroya Extension, which has been one of the key projects of the South Huntsville Business Association, is ready to start after some, after some time. And that will give direct access from Martin Road to Benaroya to the, the Main Street South area. It will be a great benefit to hotels, the restaurants, the businesses that are located in that area and that are currently being impacted by construction. And we're estimating that it will be, that project will be finished by the end of October before the, the Christmas business season starts. So that will be a, a great project. Also found out that about the same time, the southbound lane or ramp from Martin Road onto the Parkway will also be opening. So access will be restored in those areas. That will be a tremendous help to those businesses and we're glad to hear that. But probably the best news was that, that Seth Burkett from ALDOT indicated that we are, the project is currently 15% of scheduled, but 30% complete. So it tells us that they really are moving as fast as we think they are. And that was very, very good news for those businesses to hear. The most important thing we continue to stress to the public is that, that South Parkway is open for business. I drove by one, one business and saw on their marquee that it said patronize South Huntsville merchants. And I think that's a great message for all of us during the construction. In addition to great things happening in South Huntsville, there are great things happening all over town. And one of those was the opening of Leadership Huntsville Madison County Class 30. I have the pleasure, when I'm not doing city council stuff, of serving as the Board Chair for Leadership Huntsville Madison County. And the reason I mention it is that we have two of our city employees in the Leadership Huntsville class this year and I want to recognize Deputy Chief Cory Harris and Peggy Sargent, who are going to have the opportunity to be in the class when we're representing the city this year. And we wish them a really, a great opportunity to be in L-30, what will certainly be the best class ever. I have two events coming up to note. A town hall meeting that's scheduled for Monday, August 29 at 6:30 at the Bailey Cove Library. It's going to be an update on the overpasses for the general public who might be interested in hearing what the business association heard. And again, Kathy Martin is going to be joining us and Seth Burkett from ALDOT will be there to answer questions, to show drawings and slides and to bring everybody up to speed on that great progress. And then the next night on August 30, the big picture installation is going to be at Aldersgate United Methodist Church from 6 to 8 that evening and then the next day. And it will be open all day long to the public. And anybody who hasn't seen that installation, it's quite impressive. There's seven-foot pan, 20-something, seven-foot panels that show that it's a collection of all the input that's been received over the course of the big picture project from the last couple of years. And it, it's a great display and we're pleased to bring it to South Huntsville. All this information is contained in my newsletter, which is ably put together by Kelly Skrimsher and Jessica Carlton. Thank you for, for tremendous effort on that. And anyone who is interested in receiving, being on that list and, and receiving that electronic newsletter simply needs to contact my office. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Dr. Robinson. Mr. Clean?
Thank you, Mr. President. Next Monday night, the 15th, I'll be having my monthly town meeting, 6 o'clock at the Public Library. Everyone is invited and it's a great, I think, give and take that we have there. Very informal. I learn as much as the people who come to those meetings do. And it's a, it's a great process and appreciate the library letting us meet there. One of the things that is taking place this time of the year, school has started and want to really stress the importance of people to, when they're driving around, traffic's a little bit more congested, to please be careful. A lot of kids are out walking. Some of them are using sidewalks, some of them are not, but there is extra congestion taking place, especially near the elementary schools. And want everybody to please be very, very careful. One issue I want to kind of wave a flag, I know it's still a work in progress with traffic engineering, but it appears like there's still a lot of early morning, going off the mountain, going west on Governor's Drive, traffic congestion. And I know they're still working on the timing of the signalization. It seems like maybe a little bit more green time on Governor's Drive would help at those intersections, but it is a process. I know they're working on and they've been spending a lot of time on it, trying to tweak it and just keep working on it. That's all I can say. That's all I have, Mr. President. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Clean.
Mr. President.
Yes, sir, Dr. Showers.
I can wait until you-
No, sir, go ahead, sir.
Thank you. Is Mr. Shane Davis still here?
Mr. Davis, I've been passing back and forth from Winchester Road to Stringfield dated this week. As you know, school has started back. Our two new schools, McNair and Jemison is going on time. But students are walking along that path on Pulaski Pike. A sidewalk that I bought up at the last council meeting that is very close to the traffic. Have you had an opportunity to look at how we might be more protected from Stringfield back up to Winchester Road?
Dr. Showers, the answer is yes. Kathy Martin and I have visited. We have actually already issued a purchase order to the contractor that put the sidewalk in. Material should come in late next week and we're putting aluminum decorative powder-coated handrail from Stringfield to Winchester along that route.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome, sir.
Thank you very much. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, Dr. Showers. And also, Dr. Showers, thank you, sir, for attending Mid-City. I want to say we had a very spectacular event that evening. Interestingly, Mayor, we had a board that, where citizens could put what they want to see come into Mid-City. And with the exception of the post that Ms. Reed made, I wish she was here now so I can talk about her. 98% of what was put on that board were things that Mid-City had already acknowledged putting in. So that is just a reaffirmation to me that it is a good fit for that particular area. And I have those posted notes if anybody were to want to see them. The Chair moves for recess from 8:10 until about 8:20 to change the tape. Can I get a second?
Second.
Second by Dr. Showers. We will- Second by Dr. Showers. We will resume at eight-twenty. We're now at agenda item number thirteen, unfinished business items for action. Thirteen A is an ordinance number sixteen dash five thirty-two, annexing twenty-six point thirty acres of land lying north of Little Cove Road and on the west side of Watson Grand Way. This was introduced July twenty-eighth, two thousand and sixteen, at a regular council meeting. Chair moves for approval.
Second.
Second by Dr. Showers. Discussion, Ms. Nichols.
This property request is in the McMullen Cove area. It's approximately twenty-six point three zero acres. It's currently vacant property, and it is adjacent to the proposed Watson Grand subdivision, which is a future single-family detached residential subdivision. And the property owner would like to petition that this property be annexed into the city for future residential development.
Thank you, Ms. Nichols. Any further discussion? Ready for the question? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, it carries. Thirteen B is ordinance number sixteen dash five thirty-three, annexing twenty point thirty-five acres of land lying on the east side of Sanderson Road and south of Cooper Run Drive. This was introduced July twenty-eighth, two thousand and sixteen, at a regular council meeting. Chair moves for approval.
Second.
Second by Dr. Showers. Discussion, Ms. Nichols.
This property is approximately twenty point two seven acres. It's located in the Limestone County area. It is adjacent to Huntsville city limits. It's on the east side of Sanderson Road across from Creekside Elementary School, which is a Limestone County school. The current property owner petitioned for this property to be annexed into the city because they would like to add it on to the existing subdivision, so it will be a future phase of the adjacent subdivision.
Thank you, Ms. Nichols. Any discussion? Ms. Nichols, what is the necessity for us to annex that land? Why is it necessary?
Well, the property owner would like access to city services, which currently the property is vacant, and it has no infrastructure. They would like to have access to the adjacent sewer to this property. There is also a pump station to the rear of this property that they could access and utilize. Currently, it's not at its capacity, to my understanding, so this wouldn't be any type of overload on the existing infrastructure. Approximately, I think the current preliminary draft that they're working on, they have about sixty to seventy lots in the subdivision. It won't be a large addition, but city services is their primary reason for requesting annexation.
So who will provide water for them? Is this going to be Limestone County water?
I'm not familiar with whom exactly is the service provider in this area. I know there is some Athens and Limestone utilities, as well as there are some Huntsville utilities as well in this area. The developer is currently in the process of getting all of their subdivision requirements. So once they actually turn in a actual subdivision plat, they will have all of the language for utilities as far as the specific providers, and signatures are required with that as well.
And the reason for my concern is because, and we've done a lot of annexation into Huntsville and Limestone County. I've done three or four or five town hall meetings in that area from Rock Creek subdivision to Bridgewater and Heritage Estates and some other neighborhoods. And the concern is they're in the city limits of Huntsville. They're physically located in Limestone County, and we can't control the water. They're getting limestone water, which is controlled by the state legislature, and we can't get in there to provide water, and they're paying some astronomical rates. I mean, we're complaining about what our Huntsville utility charges on fixed rates. There's, in a few years, I mean, they're paying like thirty, thirty-five dollars for fixed rate right now. In a few years, they're going to be going up to about eighty dollars. So my concern is until we can get an infrastructure in place to provide them basically with the same kinds of services that our inner-city residents are getting, I'm just a little apprehensive about bringing them into Huntsville, because what's going to happen, fast-forwarding a few years? And I'm not beating up on you, Ms. Nichols. I've been beat up on by the residents in those areas. So what I'm looking at then, by the time they build it out, I'm going to be summoned there, and we're going to have a continuation of some of the same kinds of concerns. So, Mr. Davis, can you address that, sir?
I can, Councilman Culver. This will be Limestone County Water and Sewer Authority's water district. Water service districts are dictated and administered and controlled by both the Alabama Department of Environmental Management and EPA. So unless Limestone County Water and Sewer Authority wanted to sell to Huntsville Utilities this service area, there is no control by any local authority on granting or moving water service districts. And that was set up back in the fifty with the Public Works Programs, where there's a lot of federal government bonds given across the country to give sanitary conditions all across the U.S. And when those bonds got issued to ensure that utility companies who took those bonds could service those bonds, they were giving territorial rights for their service areas. So...
And that's the wall, Mr. Davis, that I've come up against, and I can't get Limestone County to come out and meet with me at my town hall meetings in those areas. And, I mean, it is, it is just a nightmare, and it's not...
Byron Cook is the manager of Limestone County Water, and I'm happy to set up a meeting. I can tell you that they're doing a major infrastructure expansion to expand their service area, to serve more customers, and the ability to serve more customers for a rural water system like Limestone County Water and Sewer Authority can help drive their rates down. One of the things you have in rural water systems is predominantly you will have higher rates till they get the density like a Huntsville Utilities that's serving thousands upon thousands of customers. So I think you could see a reversal. It's going to take some time, but they're making major capital investments out here to not just serve Huntsville residents, but Madison residents and the unincorporated areas of Limestone County and the city of Athens in their service area. So they're preparing for the growth. They're making large capital investments to make sure they're providing reliable and clean water, not only for industry like Polaris, but also for our citizens.
And thank you, Mr. Davis. I'm going to ask that we postpone this matter until, I'm looking at two council meetings out.
Mr. Culver, could I?
Yes, sir.
Say something, you know?
Yes, sir.
We have always had a policy of working with other communities when we are in those other communities, and whether you annex this or not, it's going to develop out as a subdivision, and those people are going to be having Limestone County water and sewer. That's a given for that area. And, you know, we have always, as we have worked with people who have come to us, as long as they have met the guidelines of what we have asked them, we've always accepted them as they've come in for annexation. And part of this annexation is a backfill. You can see all the other areas of Huntsville there, and this is adding to a backfill to give us a more concentrated area so we can provide services. I'm afraid it would send a bad, bad message to the full community out there if all of a sudden we said, you know, if you meet all the criteria, and we've already agreed to work with you through the annexation process, we start all of a sudden stopping because of the utility service out in that area. And also, it sends a bad message to Limestone County and to the Limestone County Commission, which we have worked very, very closely with, that, you know, we are, you know, in some way wanting to control what is theirs to control. And so we've got to be very, very careful in this. The message that we send here, I would rather y'all have a conversation, but please, I would ask council not to, you know, stop an annexation here that has followed every rule and regulation that we have.
Can I have one point, Councilman Culver and Mayor and the rest of the council? The annexation request for this piece of property is to do the fifth addition to the subdivision that you see just to the north or to the south. So it will be developed regardless whether it's in the city or within the county. The issue, should it remain in the county, it will have a different garbage pickup for public safety services. It creates some confusion. You're going to live in the same subdivision as eighty percent of Rock Creek, and you'll call the city for some service and get frustrated because you're not in the city. So, you know, you'll have a different garbage pickup. So from a unity standpoint, it being part of an existing subdivision, it kind of makes sense for it to come into that subdivision, so everyone in that subdivision is dealing with the same service provider on all fronts. But certainly don't want to, you know, rush anything, but I just wanted to point that out.
And, Mr. Davis and Mayor Battle, I certainly appreciate your comments, and I'm not saying that we're not going to approve it, but, Mr. Davis, I'm going to ask my colleagues on the council to support me in postponing this with a date certain. Until such time, you and I and the Limestone County individuals can have a sit-down discussion. So with that being said, I'm going to ask that, I'm going to make a motion to postpone this until our regular council meeting, September the eighth, two thousand and sixteen. And that would give us an opportunity to discuss this more in-depthly with not just the builder, perhaps, the developer, but I want to speak with the Limestone County Commissioners. I want to speak with their water board, and we're going to have a come-to, I need to keep it correct, we're going to have a good meeting.
I'm happy to facilitate that meeting, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Councilman Culver also have two comments. One, with the annexation application, we do have a statement of services document that does explain utilities that they may be within Huntsville Utilities jurisdiction or within another one of our municipal entities jurisdiction, and the developer has agreed with that. Also, following the annexation process, we have a zoning schedule as well. So if this item is held for two more meetings, this will hinder the zoning schedule as well as it will put the developer behind in the subdivision schedule as well. Those two cannot run concurrent. The property has to be zoned prior to starting the subdivision process, so our staff will need to relay that information to the developer as well.
Okay, so if we move it to, if I were to rescind my motion, and if we move it to August twenty-fifth, how does that change things?
That would still keep it on the same schedule as now.
And can I say, you know, it's still time is money. I mean, he's bought the property. He's come in with all the full assurances that everybody else has come in, and this has been our normal way that we do business, is that somebody applies and comes and applies to be a part of the city. We accept, if you have a problem with utilities, or if you have a problem with those Limestone County utilities, that's not to be decided on somebody who is trying to come into the city and be a part of what we are. And the more that we have development out there, the more we can provide more services. We can provide more police patrols. We can provide more fire stations and the like. And, you know, that's where you've got to get some density in there. If you don't do it, and that density is not there, then we will always be struggling to present the right kind of infrastructure in that area. And I will say that, you know, if we do put off an annexation like this, we're sending a bad message to the community out there.
It is not my intent to send a bad message to the community, but it is my intent to send a strong message to the Limestone County officials and the various water boards. So if I'm understanding correctly, you're saying to me, Ms. Nichols, that an August twenty-fifth meeting would be more workable? Is that what you're saying, or you're saying it doesn't change anything?
That would still keep them on the same zoning and also proposed subdivision processes they currently are on now.
So I'm going to rescind my motion to postpone this to September the eighth, and I'm going to make a new motion to continue this, to continue, to postpone this to our next regular scheduled council meeting, August twenty-fifth, two thousand and sixteen. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Dr. Showers. Discussion?
Mr. President?
Mr. Kling.
As a courtesy, my inclination is to support you like we do on any other council member, but in fairness on this issue, the developer, when he filled out the paperwork, he knew what the score was. And it's kind of like, everybody comes in, you're going to annex, you know, you're not going to get all the services you want overnight. You come in, this is what the current status is, and I don't, I think it's kind of arrogant, really, for a developer to expect that overnight, we're going to just, you know, roll over and do everything exactly, you know, the way that he wants it, when it's sort of like, here's the situation. You want to come in? We'd be glad to have you join us, but this is what the resources that are available now, and yeah, things may change. But we've had that happen concerning schools. We've had that happen concerning sewers, and people do something, they expect just overnight that we're going to just roll over and change everything for them. So...
Okay, Councilman Kling still has the floor.
I'm done with it.
Thank you. Mayor Battle?
And the question is, what are we changing? We're not changing anything. They're going to, if that property is going to be developed, one way or the other, and it will be either developed in the city of Huntsville or out of the city of Huntsville, it will be developed with Limestone County Water and Sewer because that's what it is put in that place. If you have a problem with Limestone County Water and Sewer, I mean, you could have told us after the Rock Creek meeting, which was, I think, I was there six or eight months ago, and we could have set up a meeting at any time, but, you know, to hold somebody who wants to develop their property and hold them out and not know if they have a development or not that will work within the city of Huntsville, or they have to go back to another, through another way of developing it, is not being, in my way, is not being responsible because we've had plenty of time. There's been plenty of time since the Rock Creek neighborhood meeting that I was at, almost a year ago, to have those conversations. And, you know, I'm sure that we can get the conversations for you, but we've just never had that request before. And to stop an annexation at this point throws a bad message to everybody.
Mayor Battle, I'm going to correct you there, sir. Anytime that we do a town hall meeting, we send a request, we sent questions, we sent a list of questions, Mayor, to your administration, to the various department heads, and they showed up to help out as much as they could. They sat there and watched me take a beating. These are issues that we have to talk about, and I just want to make certain unequivocally that everybody understands, because I had citizens in those areas. See, we've met with Heritage Estates. We've met with Rock Creek. We've met with Bridgewater. We've met with Stone Gate. We've met with, the last five of my seven town hall meetings were in proximity to those areas, and I couldn't get, I sent it also to the Huntsville Utilities. My office also contacted Limestone County, and the representatives said, if they got questions, tell them to send them to me. And that's not the way that we do business. I have always met with those Limestone County officials on matters that impacted both Huntsville and Madison County. So I'm trying to be reasonable here and just postpone this to the next regular scheduled council meeting. And, Mr. Davis, I'll make myself completely available, sir. I have to go out of town tomorrow, but I'll make myself completely available for a meeting as soon as practicable with the people that we need to meet with to discuss this so that we can, if possible, if possible, and feasible. we can, if possible, if possible and feasible, move on with this on August twenty-fifth.
Certainly, I'll set that meeting up irregardless to what actions taken on this. Mr. Cook, uh, has been very cordial to the city of Huntsville and our infrastructure growth out there. And it would take one phone call to set that meeting up.
And that Jason Black's district.
It is, it's Commissioner Black's.
Jason Black's district, and he has been very workable with us through, through all our processes of what we've done. Uh, you know, and, and I'm, I'm sorry, you haven't gotten the answers that you want, but if, if you'd ever talked to either Shane or I about meeting with the Limestone County folks, we, we meet with them all the time and we talk to them all the time. And I would be glad.
There, no disrespect, but I'm the council member for District Five, and I don't have to go through your administration to meet with elected folk in another county. I've never done it before and I'm not going to do it now. Okay? I am the council representative for District Five. And when I call, I expect a response other than we'll ask you to send, have them send questions.
We'll get you a face-to-face meeting. I'll simply get it set up, it'd be a very simple process.
Thank, thank you, sir.
May I ask a question? How many acres are we talking about here?
It's only twenty acres.
It's twenty point two seven.
This is a, a very small piece of land if it's annexed and in terms of the impact it's, it's going to have. Um, I question why this twenty acres is such a big deal. Now, I agree that there's a conversation that should have been going on for years out there with the water board and the county commission about the impact of annexation and infrastructure needs and meeting the needs. If that hasn't been taking place, then it absolutely needs to be taking place. But to hold this developer hostage for that conversation when he's done everything he's supposed to do, I just think is flat wrong. I mean, that's just bad business.
Dr. Robinson, we're not holding a developer hostage.
Well, he can't, he's obviously not going to be able, we were just heard, he's not going to be able to go forward and do what he needs to do.
Nothing is going to change unless we stop it. So it doesn't change the process, it doesn't delay him any further, according to Ms. Nichols. We're just simply asking for time for discussion. And I think that is reasonable.
Yes, sir.
I call for the question.
Ready, Chair moves for, the Chair seconds. Roll call, Dr. Robinson, how do you vote?
No.
Uh, Mr. Clean?
Epstein.
Dr. Showers?
Yes.
The Chair votes yes, it fails.
Mr. President?
I'm sorry, that's, okay, so.
Now, Mr. President, since that is, that's failed, let, let me say this. We should be consistent. Now, in the past, when any council member asks for postponement, we've always granted that. And I'm supporting this councilman. If it was you, Mr. Clean, if it was you, Dr. Robinson, you called for postponement, I would support that. I think we ought to be consistent. I don't think it's a, a situation that's going to create any problems with this councilman asking that his request be honored with those persons in Limestone.
Mr. Showers?
So I'm going to go ahead again and support him postponing it to the next meeting. Yes, sir.
Uh, Mr. President, as I've, with other, you know, sometimes when there are things I haven't agreed with or wasn't sure about, I've always seconded at someone's motion for purpose of discussion so they could be followed in debate. Here, this thing was being cut off. What I wanted to put out on the table were two things to try to speed up the process or get the issues resolved. One idea was, could we call a special session for Thursday of next week? Would that be enough time of, to get whatever discussion that needs to take place, let it take place? And we just move on at that point, a week from today.
And, and let me say this, Councilman Clean, and I certainly appreciate you intervening, but I have cut the time in half for my request. And secondly, when you're talking about a developer, there could be two weeks of inclement weather that prohibits them from developing. So there are no guarantees there. So to say that two weeks is going to cause a financial hardship, if that were to be the case, then we, maybe we need to look at whether or not we want this developer out there anyway.
And, and could I point out to you that if you pass this tonight, you annex this property and it's part of the city of Huntsville? If you don't, he has every right to pull his papers and say, I don't want to be a part of the city of Huntsville if we're going to show the inconsistencies that we've shown. We have shown consistency through every bit of this development so far, that as they put in their papers to annex in, that we annex in. This is the inconsistency that the city of Huntsville is showing, not the city council, but the city of Huntsville is showing by the actions that are, are taking place tonight.
If I can, if I can add, I think the proposed development adds twenty-six lots is, is what would, would be placed in the purple shaded area compared to the homes that you see is already in Rock Creek subdivision. I think it's phase, this would be like phase seven of the development.
Thank you. Thank you for the clarification, Mr. Davis.
I, I just knew that information hadn't been shared yet.
Any further discussion, council members? Ready for the question?
Could the motion please, please, be restated?
There's not a motion on the floor, the motion actually failed.
No, it didn't fail. The, the, what failed was the, the, the call for the vote.
I'm sorry, the call for the question, the, the motion, I'm sorry, is to postpone this until the next regular scheduled council meeting, September the eighth, two thousand and sixteen.
Is that what you're asking for us, for a vote on?
That is correct. That is, that is the motion.
For August twenty-fifth?
I'm sorry, August the twenty-fifth, I'm sorry, August the twenty-fifth. The motion is for postponement to August twenty-fifth. Is there a second?
Second.
We already have it on the floor, discussion? Any further discussion? Ready for the question? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
The Chair votes aye. Oppose?
No.
So it fails. I'm, I'm sorry, there is a, the postponement fails now, we'll go back and vote on the item. So as.
Uh, Mr. President, I, I want to get an understanding from the attorney. Ms. Gates, when there is a, a vote like this, uh, two yes and two no's, where does that put the motion?
The motion fails. Motion has to carry by a majority vote.
So the motion to postpone has failed. We're now back to the original item, thirteen C, I'm sorry, thirteen B, ordinance number sixteen dash five thirty-three, annexing twenty point thirty-five acres of land lying on the east side of Sanderson Road and south of Cooperon Drive, introduced July twenty-eighth, two thousand and sixteen, at our regular council meeting. Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Motion by Dr. Robinson. Is there a second?
I will second for purpose of discussion.
Motion has been made by Dr. Robinson, second by Councilman Clean. Discussion.
Again, the developer has done everything that needs to be done to annex this piece of property. Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am. Um, he submitted a, a full application as well as all the recorded property deeds and other required legal documentation, as well as planning staff did send out our memorandum, which we sent out for all of our annexations to all city departments as well as utilities, um, trying to get feedback if there are any issues or concerns within this area. I know there, there are currently some drainage projects going on in this area to address some issues that have been, uh, going on in the past. I think some of the issues that are within this area are not necessarily all city services issues. I think some of the issues may be also misinformation, uh, just from neighbors and other info from realtors when a lot of these residents in this old railroad bed area purchased homes. And so there is a lot of up and down between what services they're actually getting and what services they are on, they aren't receiving. Um, but on the city's end, the developer has met all of their requirements as far as the annexation request is concerned.
Was a public hearing held?
Um, for the annexations, these are only intro'd and, uh, action. We will hold a public hearing once we actually go to the zoning item. And we do not send out public hearing notices for zonings for newly annexed land, only for rezonings. But planning staff is more than willing to answer any questions at any of the neighbors in the current, uh, phases. If they have any questions, they're more than welcome to call planning staff or stop by.
And has the planning staff taken into account infrastructure issues and feels that, that the infrastructure is sufficient to support this, this annexation?
Yes, there also is a, a common area, actually two common areas that abut this property and they will service this additional phase as well. And the, uh, currently, the developer is still in the preliminary stages of getting all of their grading and drainage plans as well as finalizing, uh, their plat for the number of actual lots that they will have. But they will present all of that information to our subdivision committee and that information will go to the planning commission. Um, and there's also an internal review, uh, process as well. So if there is any issue, it will definitely be called in the subdivision process. But as for the annexation requests, uh, they have honored all of our requirements.
I think Mr. Culver has raised some, some very valid concerns about annexations and, and the infrastructure, making sure that, that we don't overtax the infrastructure and that we're able to meet the needs of the residents. I think that's a genuine concern of the people in West Huntsville and they've raised it with him. So it's a conversation that certainly needs to go on. Um, and so I guess my, I am in favor of this annexation, but also certainly would support Mr. Culver's desires to have those conversations and I'm glad he's doing it.
And council members, we're, we're certainly going to do that irregardless of tonight. Uh, happy to set that and have extensive dialogue, Councilman Culver. Uh, but as Ms. Nichols said, if this were to develop outside in the county, people living in that subdivision will have greatly diminished amenities because the proposed development of these twenty-five lots, as Ms. Nichols pointed out, the common areas, the, the clubhouse, the pool, the, the park area will be in the existing subdivision and it's not in the city of Huntsville, they won't have rights of use to those amenities. So, so it'd actually be a disservice to, irregardless when this gets developed, and that's why the developer is, is asking for it to be brought into the city. Irregardless, if it's in the county or the city, the, the, the utility rates will remain the same. There's not a surcharge in the city of Huntsville for a city of Huntsville resident for a Limestone County service. It, it's a, it's a countywide service no matter what jurisdiction you may live in. But, but we're, I'm going to work tomorrow to start setting up that meeting.
And it's for all of those aforementioned reasons.
Absolutely.
Why my colleagues should have supported me on a simple postponement for two lousy weeks.
Mr. President?
Yes, sir, Mr. Clean.
Uh, I took a look at the item, like all the other, all the other paperwork and saw it went through the planning commission and everything like that, so I came prepared to vote for it. If I'd known from you, I'd never heard any concern from you be, before this meeting. Now, what I said a few minutes ago and it would still go, uh, to speed up the process or get things worked out, I would support a one-week postponement special session next week. We could knock it out in five minutes. Uh, I, I think that would be a reasonable way to give you a chance to have the communication that you, that you want to have, that you're entitled to have. But again, I didn't hear anything from you beforehand and it looks like, in fairness on both sides of the issue, the gentleman did go through the process, including the planning commission and, and everything. And, uh, I think it's a, I think it would certainly be a good courtesy, uh, on your behalf if the count, that the council would give you a week postponement so that, uh, you could have the meetings that you would want to and, uh, you know, we could resolve the issue next week.
And Councilman Clean, I certainly appreciate you for that. And if you want to make a motion to postpone that.
I'm not doing good at making motions these days. I would just say I would support your motion if it's the best I could put up with it.
Say it again.
Mr. President?
Okay, so what we have right now is the original motion on the floor. Dr. Showers?
Uh, I'm, I'm going to vote no. Uh, I'm going back. We have agreed in time past regardless to the item, but if a council member asks for a postponement, we've agreed to do that. Uh, the one week that Councilman Clean just brought back up, that was voted down.
It was actually, it was actually the two weeks, Dr. Showers. So he's proposing, we started out with a month, with two council meetings, we went to one, and now we're going to a special call meeting for next week. So in essence, instead of four weeks, we've gone from four weeks to two weeks to now one week, basically.
Uh, Ms. Kay?
Council members, uh, there's a motion and a second for the original annexation, Council President. Someone might want to pull off the table.
We'll do that in just a second.
I want to raise again. Uh, two have already voted yes, and I'm voting no, I'm not hiding that. If there's two no's and two yeses, what does that do for this motion?
It will fail and, uh, the builder will have to start all back over. And, uh, it's for that reason why I'm willing, and, and I feel like I'm bending over backwards to try to help and work through this process. I've gone from a month to two weeks to now one week. I ain't going no further.
Mr. President?
You want to make a motion for one week?
One week. I withdraw the original motion.
You can't, I made the motion.
A motion, I'm sorry. Would you like to withdraw your original motion, Dr. Robinson?
My, my motion was to approve the annexation. I will approve, I will withdraw my motion.
Does it need a second?
Second.
Second by Dr. Showers, the original motion.
You don't need a second to withdraw, I'm just withdrawing.
Okay, so it's taken off of the floor. Now, the Chair makes a motion to continue this item, postpone this item until Thursday?
Five o'clock.
Five o'clock of next week.
Second.
Motion has been made by the Chair, second by Dr. Showers. Discussion.
Mr. President?
Yes, sir, Mr. Clean.
Okay, first of all, I'm supporting the motion, don't, don't, don't get concerned. But a request, we're all working together, we all want to be courteous and, you know, help where we can. I didn't know anything about this, you know, before the meeting, when I looked at the paperwork and I saw it gone through the planning commission and, and the whole process, I thought it was in shape. So, well, you know, not just you, me, Councilman Showers, uh, Councilwoman Rob, Councilwoman Robinson, you know, let us know. Uh, we're six elected officials, we're, we're all on the same side and we try to help where we can, support where we can, but, I mean, I got hit with a Mack truck about fifteen minutes ago.
Well, councilman, the, the, the problem with that is, we have to stay within the ethics guidelines. So if something, and you have to understand, I have to beg to get the agenda by Friday. And Mayor, you, your office, your administration is doing a good job of getting it to me by Friday. But that is the Friday before the Thursday of the council, which means I can't solicit support from any of my colleagues.
Well, actually, you could do one council member, but I understand.
Right.
I'm one of, I'm one of four that you would, could potentially could contact.
And I'll, I'll certainly keep that in mind.
And you're doing the right, you're doing the right thing, I understand that. But, okay, we're, we're trying to help, but at the same time, I think this, you know, you need to have some meetings and, 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 you know, let's get this resolved.
Just may I, for point of clarification here, are we talking about next week, August the eighteenth at five o'clock? We, I believe we have a personnel hearing scheduled for that night?
We can, we can put this, we can put this on the agenda as well in conjunction with, um, a special call meeting, we'll have the personnel hearing and then we can have this particular item or we can do it first, whatever your pleasure is. So do you all prefer to do that before, perhaps?
First, because I think we'll probably get it, we'll get it resolved.
So we'll postpone this then until, um, five o'clock on Thursday of next week. So we'll postpone this until four fifty, four fifty on Thursday of next week. That motion has been made and second. Any further discussion?
I'd appreciate council doing this, it's much better than having the developer have to start all the way back through the whole process of an annexation.
But Mayor, two weeks would not have warranted the developer starting all back over, and that was my issue.
You still have the issue that he has a chance to pull it and decide not to do that.
Well, he still has that option now, sir. Well, he still has that option now, sir.
If you had passed it tonight, it would not have been that, so.
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
Again, I'm calling for the question and all of us know that means to cease debate.
Second?
And move on to the next item.
Ready for the question, Dr. Robinson, how do you vote on the postponement?
On the ceasing debate?
I'm sorry, the call for the question.
Yes.
I, yes.
The chair votes yes, so now we've ended the debate. So we're now back to the original motion that's been made by Dr. Robinson, second by?
No, 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 the postponement.
I mean, the postponement. And second by Dr. Showers, I believe.
Yes.
A doctor, Mr. Clean. So any, we're ready for the question. Dr. Robinson, how do you vote on the postponement of this item until 4:50 on Thursday of next week?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Clean?
I, yes.
I, it's postponed until Thursday of next week at 4:50. We're now at agenda item number 13C, ordinance number 16-534, declaring certain equipment surplus and to be sold at auction per agreement with Mars LLC. This was introduced July the 28th, 2016 at a regular council meeting.
Move to approve.
Second by the chair, motion by Dr. Showers, discussion. Ready for the question? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the ayes have it, it carries. And to my colleagues, thank you so kindly for your cooperation with this particular matter. We're now at agenda item number 14, new business items for introduction. Be reminded, 14E requires unanimous consent. 14A is the introduction of an ordinance annexing 0.48 acres of land lying on the north side of Terry Drake Road and east of Old Beak Cove Road brought by planning. Is there, never mind. 14B is the introduction of an ordinance annexing 1.49 acres of land lying on the west side of Old Beak Cove and west of Hampton Cove Bridge brought by planning. 14C is the introduction of an ordinance annexing 0.63 acres of land lying on the north side of Terry Drake Road and east of Old Beak Cove Road brought by planning. 14D is the introduction of an ordinance amending the code of ordinances of the city of Huntsville, Alabama, Article 1, Section 15.2, administration of chapters generally brought by finance. 14F is the introduction of a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter to a standard fixed-price agreement between the city of Huntsville and Jake Marshall Service, Inc., to provide for a comprehensive energy saving plan for LED lighting at 2739 Johnson Road and 100A Church Street brought by General Services. We'll take those items up at our next council meeting. We'll now go back to agenda item 14E, which requires unanimous consent. The chair moves for unanimous consent to take 14E, the introduction of an ordinance declaring certain equipment as surplus to be salvaged by the insurance provider. The chair seconds that motion, ready for the question.
You made the motion.
Beg your pardon? The motion for unanimous consent.
Yeah, you made the motion and I seconded it.
The chair made the motion, second by Dr. Showers. Dr. Robinson, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mr. Clean?
Yes.
Dr. Showers, the chair votes aye. The unanimous consent passes. Now, motion for the item.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Dr. Showers, second by Dr. Robinson, discussion. Ready for the question? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the ayes have it, it carries. Now at agenda item number 15, new business items for consideration or action. Council members, are there any items that you wish to hold?
15H and 15S.
15H as in hotel and 15S as in Sierra.
The seawall.
So H and S?
That is correct. So far, council members, we have 15H and 15S. Are there any additional items that you wish to hold?
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
I know the item was pulled off the agenda, but is it expected that item's going to be coming back at a future meeting concerning the McWilmar Acres?
15Z?
Z. I just didn't know anything about the circumstance, if nobody knows tonight or?
If if someone can address that?
They could they could just send an email if nobody's here.
Okay, would you just send an email regarding this item, whether 15Z will has the potential to come back up?
It will be coming back up, just all the paperwork didn't get ready in time. We were anticipating that it would. It probably will make the next council meeting, Councilman Clean.
Thank you.
So council members, we have 15H, 15S as in Sierra. Any additional items? 15A is a resolution authorizing the mayor to accept physically year 2016 Firehouse Subs Public Safety Foundation Serensis Fund 1.000 Alpha Echo Delta Grant Campaign Eternal Defibrillator Grant Award brought by police. 15B is a request for authorization to advertise and field the position of parking enforcement officer one, grade eight, at a higher than minimum if necessary, brought by parking and public transit. 15C is a resolution authorizing the city attorney to settle the workers' compensation claim of Mike Leachie brought by the city attorney. 15D is a resolution authorizing the city attorney to settle the workers' compensation claim of Gary Ross brought by the city attorney. 15E is a resolution authorizing the city attorney to settle the workers' compensation claim of James Andrews brought by the city attorney. 15F is a resolution authorizing the city attorney to settle the workers' compensation claim of Dana Pennington brought by the city attorney. 15G is a resolution authorizing the city attorney to settle the workers' compensation claim of Michael Hyder brought by the city attorney. 15J is a resolution authorizing the clerk treasurer to invoke CBNS letter of credit number 555544 for Anselly's Farm Phase 1 Subdivision brought by the city attorney. 15J is a resolution authorizing the clerk treasurer to invoke Service First Bank Letter of Credit number 13780 for Hawks Ridge for Hawks Ridge Estate Subdivision brought by the city attorney. 15K is a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter to an agreement with the low bidders' meeting specifications as outlined in the attached summary of bids for acceptance brought by finance. 15L is a resolution authorizing the acceptance of donations brought by finance. 15M is an ordinance amending budget ordinance number 15-642 by changing the appropriated funding and various departments and funds brought by finance. 15N is a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter to a special employee agreement between the city of Huntsville and Carroll English brought by landscape. 15O is approval of to advertise and field the position of clerk, general clerk two, pay grade five, and to field position at a higher rate than minimum if necessary brought by engineering. 15P is a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute change order number one between the city of Huntsville and Reed Contracting Services, Inc., for sanitary sewer relocation project widening and relocation of Church Street, Phase 1 Project Number 65-01 Romeo Delta 05 and Aldott Project Number Sierra Tango Papa Hotel Victor 4500 subsection 200 brought by engineering. 15Q is a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute change order number two between the city of Huntsville and Reed Contracting Services, Inc., for wind drive relocation, Project Number 65-15 Romeo Delta 02 brought by engineering. 15R is a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter to an agreement between the city of Huntsville and Volkerd, Inc., for engineering design services for public right-of-way self-evaluation and transition plan, Project Number 71-16 Romeo Delta 10 brought by engineering. 15T is a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter to an agreement between the city of Huntsville and Garvey LLC for engineering design services for wastewater treatment plant disinfection upgrades, Project Number 71-16 Sierra Papa 49 brought by Water Pollution Control. 15Y is a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter to an agreement between the city of Huntsville and Garvey LLC for engineering services for 2016 flow monitoring program, annual operations, maintenance, data analysis, and reporting, Project Number 71-16 Sierra Papa 48 brought by Water Pollution Control. 15V is a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter to a lease agreement between the city of Huntsville and the National Children's Advocacy Center brought by Parks and Recreation. 15W is a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter to an agreement between the city of Huntsville and Homegrown LLC Parks and Recreation brought by Parks and Recreation. 15X is a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter to an employment contract between the city of Huntsville and Scott A. Rogers to service part-time night court judge of the city of Huntsville Municipal Court brought by Municipal Court. 15Y is a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter to a contract agreement between the city of Huntsville Municipal Court and the administrative director of courts for the court referral program brought by Municipal Court. 15AA is a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter to an agreement between the city of Huntsville Pierce Construction Company, Inc., to provide construction services for restroom renovations located at 2820 Holmes Avenue brought by General Services. The chair moves for approval and consolidation of 15A through G, I through Y, and AA.
Second?
I to R.
Motion's been made and properly seconded by Mr. Clean. Ready for the question? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the ayes have it, it carries. 15H is a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter to a purchase and sales agreement for a certain parcel of property located at 2410 Memorial Parkway North and a lease termination agreement which is conditioned upon closing of the same brought by the city attorney. Motion by Dr. Showers, is there a second?
Second.
By Mr. Clean, discussion. Ready for the question?
No, I'd I'd like to know what this project is about.
Thank you.
Mr. Davis?
Mr. Davis, we have 15H, item 15H.
As he comes up, this is more of the property that we have been slowly but surely picking up building by building along North Parkway to get rid of what I would call a very desolate little area right in there. This is the third parcel that we picked up there and we've been working on it. You might want to finish it out, Shane.
Yeah, Dr. Showers, this is part of our commitment to the Lantana Parkway redevelopment cleanup. We are acquiring those, we we've got an arrangement with the landowner. It's the same set price we've been paying for the others, but but we've been letting tenants not renew leases or find an alternate location, so we don't displace any business. So this is two tracts next door to the former Terry's Pizza. So it's our our redevelopment of the Parkway.
How many more tracts are there?
We have two left and and then we'll be able to demolish and clean up. So we hope to have those first quarter of 2017. There's a couple of leases still left there that run to the end of the year. But we're making we're making good progress.
That then answers the question I think Ms. Reed is fond of asking about, what are you going to do with that property and why haven't you done anything and it's still sitting there because it's being done in pieces?
Yes, we we want to be good stewards to current small business owners that are there. So we we've been patiently working with landowners. So once we do that, we will demo the property, clean it up and and hopefully put it back on the market, get recoup some of our proceeds and see new development there.
Thank you.
Mr. President, I guess I'm just saying it's a great project and similar to what I've said about, you know, projects in the district I represent, this is a great intercity, you know, development cleanup that's taking place and I think I think y'all will be commended for it. I think it'll be a great thing for the city and for those residents over there.
Thank you, Mr. Clean. Any further discussion? Ready for the question? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the ayes have it, it carries. Now at agenda item 15S, resolution authorizing the mayor to enter to an agreement between the city of Huntsville and the low bidder, Miller and Miller, Inc., for Big Spring Park Seawall stabilization, best bid and option number three, project number 65-15 Delta Romeo 05 brought by engineering. Motion by Dr. Showers, second by Dr. Robinson, discussion. I know this is the item that we've already discussed that Mr. Hamilton has shared with us, but any further discussion?
It's a large enough project, I thought it just needed separate consideration.
Thank you, Dr. Robinson. Any further discussion? Ready for the question? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the ayes have it, it carries. Now at agenda item number 16, legal department items and transactions. 16A is vacation easements, 16A1 is ordinance vacating a portion of utility and drainage easements inspiration on Green Mountain Phase 2, lot 61 and 62, 11 and 13, Bluffview Drive, Del Tina Development. Is there a motion? Motion by Dr. Showers, second by Dr. Robinson. Any discussion? Ready for the question? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the ayes have it, it carries. 16A2 is an ordinance vacating a utility and drainage easement, Little Mountain Phase 2, Lot 13, 4624 Settle Ridge brought by Kozelowski.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Dr. Showers, second by Dr. Robinson, discussion. Ready for the question? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the ayes have it, it carries. 16A3 is an ordinance vacating a utility and drainage easement, Franklin Rand Subdivision, Lot 2, 220 Rand Avenue, Choose Life of North Alabama, is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Motion by Dr. Showers, second by Dr. Robinson, discussion. Ready for the question? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the ayes have it, it carries. Council members, are there any vacation of right-of-ways deeds for acceptance, routine bond satisfactions, or liquor bond mortgages? We're now at agenda item number 17, non-roster communications from the public. If you wish to address the council, go to the microphone, state your name and address for the record, and you'll have approximately three minutes to address the council.
My name is Joseph Lee. My address is 5104 Sunrise Trail, Huntsville, Alabama.
Thank you, sir.
I I will make this very, very short. I generally don't come to council meetings and I'm thankful I was here and I did not plan to speak, but after hearing such wonderful projects all over the city and how well the city officials are doing with Mid-City and also with Central City and how we have a wonderful staff with the new video program, we have absolutely wonderful visionary persons on the staff who are bringing projects to fruition that are wonderful. So my question is this, and I'm glad that Shane, Mr. Davis is still in the room. Councilman Clean knows I'm an urban planner and I I have some difficulty. Let me say this one other thing, I'm also a lifetime member of the William Hooper Council Alumni Association, okay? Now, I worked in city government all over the country, both state and federal, and that's immaterial. But the city of Huntsville has a city center development that's going to have a return of investment of $30 million, 20-year term, okay, even greater than that. The city of Huntsville is looking to build 1,000 hotel rooms, I'm assuming as soon as possible, by private developers, et cetera. The city of Huntsville and maybe with the with the school board, I'm not for sure which one, own the property that is referred to as the William Hooper Council High School. Now, and the city of Huntsville has agreed to put aside a million dollars, I think it is, of the sale of the land for Central Central City for this project. And the city of Huntsville has a alumni association raising private funds to put together sufficient money to do whatever is planned for Council High School. And Councilman Showers is coming to a 50th anniversary.
And Mr. Lee, your time is up, do you need another minute?
Just one minute, I'm so sorry.
Thank you, sir, you may proceed.
Thank you, I really appreciate it, and I'll get to the point. Sir, the city owns the property where Council High School sits. The city owns Stroggs Swimming Area. And I know that Councilman Showers is coming to his meeting. I've been in this city 30 years, 33 really. The Council High School project has been being discussed almost at least 20, maybe 25 years, okay? I think the city of Huntsville has bright enough officials to bring this project to fruition, whatever it is. And I don't know the details of the project, I'm not trying to know the details of the project. I'm not trying to know the details of the project. But we've got thirty million dollars over here that we can look at this project with, and maybe more.
And Mr. Lee, your time is up, sir.
My question is this right here. Can we work toward a date using the thirty million for this developer? Let's work with that developer, let him help us.
Your time is up, Mr. Davis, if you'd like to address that, please, thank you.
First of all, I highly respect Dr. Lee, he's a wonderful planner, and he's educated several that are part of our great staff, so always good to see Dr. Lee. I think progress is being made on that site. I know some preliminary design has been put together, some conceptual design to bring to the Alumni Association that they've preliminary blessed of the uses of that, and, you know, when the developer pays us for that land early next year, it will allow us to hopefully take, what is it, a planning sketch of uses that the Alumni Association has blessed, and take those to a full set of construction plans, and, you know, when we get to that stage, there's a lot of options on the table. You know, a lot of our public facilities are built in phases, so, you know, we could take some of those proceeds and some of the fundraising that the Alumni Association that Dr. Lee mentioned, maybe do a first phase and get it out into the public, and I think early next year, there will be a lot of conversation with Council High, and the redevelopment of that is, we will have proceeds from City Center, and we'll see how we can get started with those proceeds and the fundraising efforts of Alumni Association, and have fruitful conversations of maybe a multi-phase type facility to get, you know, something going on that site.
And could I piggyback on what Mr. Davis said?
There, Ben.
Dr. Lee, you know, Dr. Showers right here, I've been in a dozen meetings with him. He's been driving this point home time and time and time again. We finally got a plan of something that the Alumni Association agreed to, this is what we would like to do. I mean, and it took a long time to get them down, because we had several different plans that worked through. Dr. Showers has pushed through to have that in place. At one time, if you remember, the land was transferred to the Housing Authority, we've got to get that land back. That land is also in floodplain, and hopefully by doing some of the drainage work that we're doing on the other project, this may take care of some of the floodplain problems that we have in there right now, and lower the cost of what we've got to, got to build with. We have the initial million dollars, which gives us enough money to really get the plan down, get it put together, figure out where the next steps are. We are going to need some money raised by the, by the community, and that's a given. But that's a great, good thing, because it shows community support for, for the project. But we're, we have said from word one, and Dr. Showers has said from word one, we will push to get this project done.
Thank you, Mayor Battle, thank you, Mr. Davis and Dr. Lee. I apologize, I believe I may have referred to you as Mister. Well. Yes, sir, well, I'm Dr. Culver, but I'm, I'm Will Culver. Thank you, sir, thank you so kindly. And if you'll state your name and address for the record, please, ma'am.
Okay, my name is Carol Cottney, I am still homeless, I don't have a residential address. I do have a P.O. Box.
Okay, Ms. Cotton.
Down at Hazlen Station, P.O. Box four six five three, and I'm registered to vote in District Four. I wanted to congratulate Amanda Howard, she's one of the local Realtors, she's won some national awards and recognitions, that puts her like in the top one percent. I'd like to congratulate downtown Huntsville and all the work that they've done. And I'd like to thank the Huntsville Times for keeping us informed about city events and state. Madison Square Mall, I think this is what, the third different idea, and it's finally going to take off. I think that's great and wonderful. Orange Day is the twenty-fifth day of every month. It was established by the United Nations in two thousand and twelve to stop violence against women, asking people to wear like an orange ribbon. I think that is something that's great and wonderful. I personally, being homeless since December of two thousand and eight, don't want to see four more years like the last eight. And I would like to ask all registered voters in all five districts to show up on Voting Day and vote for the third name on the ballot. The name is Boyd, we need a new mayor. We've got to deal with the issues of, for the homeless and the very low income, and it's not being dealt with, we need solutions. A hundred and ten years ago, the federal government did a multiple-year investigation. Two textile mills here in Huntsville were part of it. They had employed elementary-aged children. So, we have a bad history in the past, and I think it's very important that the adults that live and reside and do business in Huntsville, we get our act together, so the Department of Justice will lift the ban on the Huntsville City Schools. And I think that's what it's going to take for this town to be an equal opportunity for everybody in all five districts.
And thank you, Ms. Cotton, I will have to point out that you're out of order to use this platform to advocate voting for anyone, we can't do that in here. It doesn't matter who the individual is, so we'll refrain from using this to suggest voting for anyone, other than just vote. Is there a motion?
Show move.
Motion's made, we adjourn, thank you.